We're live streaming now?
We are.
Great, thanks Ryan. I think, can everyone turn their, I think we got them all on, great. Welcome everyone to our city council special regular meeting held by teleconferencing Zoom. It's Monday, July 20th, 2020. And I would call this meeting to order and ask that we put up the American flag and we will do the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you're able and hopefully, yep, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, with the, with the clerk please take role.
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Questa.
Present.
Councilmember Russell.
Present.
Mayor Potem Sierra.
Present.
Councilmember Stone.
Present.
Councilmember Wink.
Present.
Mayor Olson.
Present.
All seven present.
Thank you. We have one study session topic tonight, agenda item number four A, and this is the Parks and Recreation, Director Christina Underhill is here along with manager of open space Dave Lee, to present with the Parks and Recreation Commission and their subcommittee on the recommendations for the off-leash program. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having us. So good evening mayor and council. This evening I'm joined by Dave Lee as well as Dave Lewis from our code enforcement, and Mark Husbands and Kate Truesdale who's part of the off-leash committee, is subcommittee for our Parks and Recreation Commission. With their recommendations they're going to present to you tonight. Let me see if I can share my screen here appropriately. Okay, hopefully you can see that. So, I'm just going to be going into presentation since we've only got 10 minutes. As far as, I just wanted to remind council, these are the current parks which with off-leash areas. We have Centennial, Duncan, Jason, and then the Northwest Green Belt. Those all have off-leash privileges for dogs during the hours that are listed below. Canine Corral is a fenced dog park at Bellevue Park. There was a question, there was a question from the meeting back in March from council as far as, you know, what other dog parks are in the area? And I, as you zoom out, you lose your dog parks. So I zoomed in, this is Denver metropolitan area. You can see Inglewood down in the corner, ours are highlighted by those blue stars. So from this perspective, you can see at least from the Denver side of the dog parks that exist. They do have dog parks in Lakewood, Littleton, Aurora, so our surrounding cities also have dog parks as well. So real quick, I just wanted to talk about park design. Originally our car parks with off-leash privileges were not designed to be used by dogs. They were used for baseball fields, multi-use fields, playgrounds, courts, those sort of things. So when we go to design parks, like if we redo Cushing Park, we're going to look at not only the market, what we have in our current system, talk to the community, find out what they want, what the park is going to be used for. As far as the specific user groups, there's a lot of engagement that goes on when you're designing the park. You have sports field users, youth groups, parents, dog owners, skate park users, and then your neighbors. You want to be cognizant of what you're putting in for the neighbors. And then also areas of consideration that we take a look at. One, first and foremost is the safety, how the park is designed. Is it going to be a safe location? Where do you put the amenities in a park? Typically you don't try to put a baseball field next to a parking lot, foul balls will ruin cars quickly. You look at putting restrooms near playgrounds because parents usually appreciate that when that occurs. You look at the size of a park, Jason, Centennial, and Duncan, which all have off-leash privileges, have a total of 94 acres total between all of them. But of that 94 acres, there's only 16.7 acres of turf. So you look at how much space you have to put green space, potentially a dog park, multi-use fields, all of that. So the size of the park comes into play, and I'll show you a couple examples here shortly. Then you also have areas of mixed use you have to think about. If you're near a busy street, you might put a fence around your park to keep everything that's in that park in there when they're visiting. As far as, you know, multi-use fields, how is it going to be used? Are you going to have dogs off-leash? Do you want to protect the playgrounds from the dogs, the dogs from the playgrounds? What type of play is going to be happening? And then the biggest piece too beyond safety is just areas of conflict. Playgrounds and picnic shelters, dogs coming into those and causing some issues that we're seeing at Jason Park and some others. What areas are going to have conflict in? Sometimes you have sports fields, you put up the giant tower lights and the conflicts are now with the neighbors. And all the lights spilling into their homes in the evening hours. So these are all things that we look at when we go into park design. I wanted to show you three of the parks that we have here. We have Jason Park. The blue boxes are highlighting the areas where off-leash is probably most prevalent. We do not allow off-leash dogs on the playgrounds, on the basketball courts, and the picnic shelter. When the field's not in use, that multi-use field on the left or the little baseball field that we have, that can be used spaces well for off-leash dogs. But while they are in use, we need to keep the dogs off those fields. If you look over at Duncan Park, you can see the size of the park and how much green space is left once that box is drawn in for the multi-use field. That particular field actually rotates a little bit to preserve the grass. When that is in use, there's not a ton of space for off-leash at that park. So you can see there's a lot of areas of conflict potentially with the off-leash program at Duncan. Just due to lack of green space. And then we jump over to Centennial Park. And obviously the lake takes up a majority of that park. However, the four boxes highlight areas off-leash can be used. However, three of the boxes are used for multi-use fields for practice. They're not full-size fields, but they're used for practice. The one that's kind of on the north side, northwest corner there, that is a native area. It's also used for off-leash. We do find a lot of people like to walk this park with their dogs off-leash around the lake because it's a nice path. But you can see we're somewhat constricted with the size of the lake and how much green space we have there. So as far as just an overview, that's covering some of the council questions that came up at the previous council meeting over the weeks here. I'm going to get this over to Kate Truesdale who is part of the off-leash subcommittee to go over not only their recommendations, but how they got to those recommendations regarding the off-leash program. So Kate and Mark, if you're available.
Great, thank you Christina. Can you guys hear me or am I having echo back?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good, it sounded a little echoey on my end. Well, thank you for having us here tonight to talk about this. It has been a long time coming. So we're really excited to introduce ourselves and share our recommendations. Christina, if you could go to the next slide, please. So we formed in October of 2018 as a result of some, a lot of increased complaints from citizens about the off-leash dog program. Our strategy for this was to talk to different stakeholder groups and kind of see how they were feeling about the program and if, you know, there was any key issues or concerns. So we met with Inglewood Code Enforcement Officer Dave Lewis. We met with Inglewood Unleashed, and there's four people who are part of their leadership team. And then we met with Pirate Youth Sports, Alan McGrill, who is the director of soccer. If you can go to the next slide Christina. So and then in this May is when we decided to finally make some recommendations, which we're discussing tonight. So through our conversations, we learned a couple of really key things. The first is that there has been a major increase in calls about dogs that are not under voice control. Dogs that have been attacking other dogs or aggressive towards children. And then dogs that aren't being properly paid attention to by their owners. These off-leash dogs interfere with sports events and practices, family picnics at rented shelter space, and they've been knocking children over on the playground. The off-leash dogs also have been damaging turf at parks and those repairs cost the city money. And then the final thing that we found interesting is that there's a lot of confusion around the off-leash hours and the seasons and how it changes with off-leash dogs. And a lot of that we find is confusion from non-Inglewood residents coming in to use our parks for the off-leash dog program. So all of this kind of led to just the bottom line from our findings, which is the off-leash dog program is just not sustainable as it currently operates. And especially as our city continues to grow and develop, we really need to address this issue and see what we can do to create some balance. So if you can go to the next slide Christina, please, thank you. So our reasoning, there's really three key incompatible park use issues that we were finding with all of our conversations. And this is what led us to making these recommendations. So first, off-leash dogs are interacting with families using city rented shelter space. So this we found is kind of discouraging to citizens and kind of deters them from wanting to rent. And that's the potential for missed revenue opportunities for the Parks and Rec Department. And that is, we really just can't have that, we need to maximize as much revenue as we can. Dogs also interfering with city rented sports fields during games. If the sports teams and leagues were to leave Inglewood Parks and Rec for somewhere else where off-leash dogs are not an issue, that would be very, you know, potential for missed revenue again. Or even if participants were to switch leagues because they didn't like having the off-leash dogs at their practices, that would be horrible for pirate youth sports. And then the final thing is just the dogs interacting with children on the playgrounds. This is the one that we are very concerned about. You know, God forbid an incident were to happen between a child or an aggressive dog, that would just be so terrible. And we feel like we just really can't allow anything to get to that point. And it's time to take some preventative action around that. So therefore, when we made our solutions, we looked at things that would create balance between off-leash dog privileges as well as park usage, things that would prioritize the health and safety of children and families that use the parks. And then just ensure that the Parks and Rec Department is really maximizing potential revenue. Can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So these are our recommendations. I'm just going to go through them and explain a little bit about what the key points were behind each of these. So the first one is off-leash dog privileges will be eliminated at Centennial, Jason, and Duncan Parks. These parks all have athletic fields, rental shelters, and playgrounds. And these parks, especially Jason and Duncan, are the two most problematic parks. Also excessive dog use has damaged the turf at, it was Jason Park, and we had to fence off the park to regrow the grass. And that's costly for the Parks and Rec Department. Our second recommendation is that the Northwest Green Belt will remain an off-leash dog park. And we propose that Emerson Park transitions to an off-leash dog park. The fence or the playground at the Northwest Green Belt will be kind of fenced off. There's an area there where we don't think it will be too difficult to have those spaces together. And then also Emerson Park, we've had citizens come to Park and Rec Commission meetings, nearly every meeting for as long as I've been on the commission, which is two years now, just really wanting Emerson Park to become an off-leash dog park. So by transitioning it, we think it's a great opportunity for the Parks and Rec Department because we'll have a northern and a southern off-leash dog park that is not enclosed. So that's why we're excited about that one. The third recommendation is that the Parks and Rec Department will develop a plan and secure funding for an off-leash dog park at Cushing Park. This park will be enclosed. And also this park has, this plan has been around since the 2017 master plan. That's when it was first introduced. We believe that it will disperse dog activity across the city, which will also help code enforcement manage the various calls that come in a little bit better. And we have, we think that maybe this could be a small dog park only, which is something citizens have also been asked for. And then also having another north-south enclosed park, this will be great. The thing that's key to this is the funding. We really need to get funding sorted out to develop this park. And either that's through the Parks and Rec Department securing a grant, or maybe council would want to send some money this way. But anything we can figure out to get this funded would just be great regardless of kind of these other outcomes. This is the key piece that we need to have to solve this issue. Fourth, we're going to ask the Parks and Rec Department to take the lead, to continue its take the lead campaign. I'm really impressed by this campaign. I think it's been really great and really educational. We think that implementing these changes, communication will be huge. So if we can continue this program, it would be great and hopefully help citizens adjust and support these decisions. And then finally, we would like as the Park and Recreation Commission, for the department to look into creating new opportunities for residents to socialize. One idea could be adult sports leagues programs. A lot of people in the city say they like the off-leash hours as an opportunity to interact with each other. So maybe finding a way to replace that socializing time without the dogs' involvement could continue building community. So that is our recommendations and I'll hand it over to Christina again. I don't know if you have questions, but yeah, that's what we're thinking, thank you.
So we'll do questions and discussion here in a second. I wanted to read a statement before we move on to that from Inglewood Unleashed, and then also give you just some observations I had at Duncan Park last week. So Inglewood Unleashed states Park and Code Staff met with Inglewood Unleashed on Thursday, June 16th at Jason Park. The objective of that meeting was to create channels of communication that will enhance enjoyment for all users of our off-leash parks. Inglewood Unleashed presented a proposal which outlined implementing a licensing program for residents and non-residents. The licensing program would be implemented and enforced by Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec. Inglewood Unleashed is ready and willing to partner with Parks and Rec to create the best framework for this possible. Inglewood Unleashed recommended that its new individual park ambassadors serve as a communication link between park, playground users, off-leash users, and code enforcement to foster dialogue and harmony between all park users. Inglewood Unleashed recommends updating and increasing signage at all parks with off-leash privileges. Other parts of the discussion included partial fence to separate off-leash from other park activities at Jason Park. And this is the first of many, many meetings to make the Inglewood Off-Leash Program a success for all stakeholders. So last Thursday I went to Jason Park to meet with a couple of our residents regarding the off-leash program and just kind of get their take on what was happening out there and their experiences with off-leash program. I witnessed, unfortunately, I witnessed a whole bunch of conflicts going on. I wasn't expecting this because we've heard stories of dogs doing certain things they shouldn't, or owners not doing things they shouldn't. But I came everything short from a dog bite happening. But I witnessed conflicts on the playground. We had a kid go down the slide and a dog ran up to the kid and started growling and barking at him. There was people on the basketball courts playing and dogs were running around the courts. When we were meeting in the picnic shelter, we had dogs come into the shelter and we didn't have any food, but they came in anyways. Dog owners were congregating for the most part in one location and talking. We had dogs running around the park. I witnessed a couple of dogs go to the bathroom and I never saw it picked up. So ultimately there is conflict out there. And I know many dogs are good dogs. We have some great dog owners out there that really respect the park and the privileges that exist. But as a professional in the Parks and Recreation field, I'm truly mandated to ensure that we have inclusivity throughout our park system for all users. That includes dogs, kids, adults, seniors. But our goal too is to provide safety and protect our users. And so ultimately that is our main goal that we want to find a solution for, to reduce the conflict of off-leash dogs and other park users out there. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to council. We've, like I said, we have Dave Lewis from Code Enforcement, Dave Lee. He's been in our park system for a very long time and can answer just about any question. We have both Kate Truesdale and Mark Husbands from the Subcommittee that can answer questions as well.
Thank you, council. I'm going to let you start asking some questions. I need to ask one clarifying question, and I know I've sent something to city manager Lewis. Your dates on the history, I believe, might be either incorrect or you're missing a major section. In 2008, '09 is when I believe. I'm wondering if the date 2003 and 2002 are actually correct? And do you have any documentation to back those up? I ran for office in 2009 and I watched for nearly six months, the whole dialogue around off-leash. And there has to be something in the record around then. That's when I thought we started off-leash. I'm wondering if the dates just are typos or mistakes? Or do you have real documentation for those dates?
Yeah, so I've got Dave Lee on here and he does have documents. We do have some dates from '08 and '09 that do exist. It would have been a very long report if, council report if we include all the dates. But yeah, we did find some and Dave can speak on that.
So maybe you can, just to fill that piece in for all of council, I do think it was important because it, things changed again in 2008, '09.
If I can speak here, mayor. City council approved council bill number 36, ordinance number three, series of 2001, and ordinance amending title seven, chapter 1A of the Inglewood Municipal Code 2000 pertaining to dogs and cats. In this ordinance effectively brought animals on leash. Then city council approved resolution number four, series of 2002, establishing a pilot park program for off-leash dogs. And that was December 30th, 2002. December 2003, city council directed staff to establish an off-leash task force for the purpose of exploring the creation of a formal off-leash park. And I think, mayor, this is what you're talking about. So that started in 2003 and was finalized, I believe, in May of 2004. I can continue on if you want.
Yeah, I actually saw that and is there something from 2008, '09?
Yes.
So maybe, maybe it's in lightness. I don't remember exactly what was decided there, but I do think that's the most recent kind of decision, I think would be helpful to know. To be honest, I just remember it being very, very long meetings. I can't remember what they decided, except maybe Canine Corral. I just think we need to know what the history was.
Bear with me here a second.
Thanks, sorry.
I've got two council requests from 2009. The first one is May 21st, council request 09069. Information was requested regarding citizen inquiry about changing the status of Jason Park, which is currently is designated off-leash park, to the status of leash required in the park. In addition, a concern was expressed about an aggressive dog in the park. So there was a lot of, a lot of council back and forth on that. And then in October 21st, 2009, we had council request 09148. And that was requesting costs and funding for Canine Corral. So council wanted to know what it cost us to build Canine Corral at that point. And those funds.
That's okay then, I, you can't, if there's nothing from them, I'll contact former council members because there was something in that timeframe. I'll let it go from there. Mayor Potem, you're the first one up with your hand.
Thank you so much, and thank you very much for the presentation, Director Underhill, and also to the Parks and Rec Commission, Ms. Trucegod and Mr. Husbands. I guess my question is regarding the on-leash, or excuse me, the fenced-in area around Cushing Park. Do we happen to know where exactly that's going to be? Because it wasn't in the material itself. And then also, do we know what the cost would be for that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the area of Cushing Park will be west of the Inca Street. If you know where the flower beds are currently, there's another green space that's next to that. And that's where the park's going to go. Now with Cushing Park, it's going to be a little bit more expensive because of the location of the park near the Little Dry Creek. So you have to get a stormwater study done to make sure runoff is healthy and there's some mitigation that goes into play there. We do have an opportunity to seek a grant for Cushing Park to get this dog park done. However, we need to move fairly quickly on it, like within the next couple of weeks, in order to ensure we could potentially get funding to do Cushing Park. And so also on the radar would be some funding for Jason Park to enhance the picnic shelter and restroom area and a few other things. There could be an opportunity too, if we were to go towards Jason Park, to maybe look at fencing an area in for the off-leash dogs as well. But like I said, the grant is coming up and we'd like to get some stuff done, potentially this year or early next. At least secure the funding to perform the work. So as far as cost, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead and finish your thought on the cost.
So as far as it's cost, I can only estimate because we don't have the plans in place to know exactly what's going to go into it at Cushing. Probably between 40 and 70,000, depending on what studies are required. It could be a little bit more or less, just depending on the initial design and study that needs to be done. And Jason Park, to fence an area in, depending on the size, could run anywhere between 30 to 60. It just depends on the size of it and where we'll put it and everything.
Point of, mayor.
You're asking for a?
Point of information.
Clarification of information, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. So I'm hearing plans in the future tense for Cushing Park. Have we done away with the Parks master plan that was once something council discussed and sort of prioritized our Parks work and funding based on? Is that no longer a living document that we?
No, that's, that's a living document. So we were going to go for a Parks Bond this year and that would have been one of the parks that was addressed. It would have been a bigger remodel of that park. But this grant's a smaller dollar amount. So doing the small dog park area with a fence would make sense, especially with where we're at now with off-leash dogs and some more demand for off-leash. So that, that design is still good to go.
Okay, great, back to Mayor Potem.
Yeah, just a question regarding the two grants. Are we able to put in for both grants or do we have to prioritize one or the other?
I'll give that to Dave, he's our fabulous grant writer and he's got a lot of money for us, so.
We can apply for up to two grants. Funding depending on who they award grants to may not be entirely funded for one project or the other.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Lee.
Next is member Stone.
I have just a few questions. So why Green Belt versus Jason or Duncan?
Give that to Kate or Mark to answer that.
Mark, do you want that or do you want me to take it?
Sure, yeah, I mean, the answer is fairly simple. That location does have a playground, but that's sort of the only, one of the three categories of incompatible uses that we were looking at, whereas the other three parks have all three, including sports fields and pavilions, both of which the city is renting. And I know that for me, it's a concern that the, the quality of, you know, what people are getting when they pay to use those city facilities is, you know, impacted by the city's, you know, off-leash policy in those places.
Gotcha, thank you.
In that case, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but in that case, you thought that there was a, there was an alternative way of resolving that problem, which is simply to fence the playground, which makes up a small part of that particular unit.
Yeah, sure. So the next question is, are the most problematic sites also the most used sites? If anybody knows. I don't know, that's something we've quantified.
I'll give it, Dave Lewis, if you can, you've seen it, you've been out there a lot more.
I don't have statistics to quantify how, how often parks are being used. We do consistently see use at those parks. As far as the off-leash privileges, we do see considerable use at Centennial Park and at Jason Park.
Okay, and then I actually feel like Director Underhill kind of already answered this. But is it more cost-effective and especially going along with, you know, considering that we may not be able to get multiple grants fully funded, is it more cost-effective to fence in a portion of Jason than it is to fence in Cushing Park?
That could definitely be, you know, I don't think Jason's fence, depending on the size, is going to be as much as Cushing will just because of the location of where Cushing is for its dog park, so.
And that's because of the environmental impact study that's required?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay. Awesome, that's it, thank you, I appreciate it.
Member Stone, I am member Anderson.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you for all of our presenters and for the Subcommittee for doing all the research and the recommendations on this. I'm trying to follow exactly, it sounds like there's an effort to, to maintain a off-leash, non-fenced park, both in the north part and the south part of Inglewood. But it's, if it's just Northwest Green Belt and Emerson Park, to me, those are both in the north, the north part of Inglewood. Is there something I'm missing here?
Kate or Mark? I'd cater Mark.
I agree with you. Those, both of the parks are not really on the southern half of the city. You know, one of them is a little bit more central than the other, obviously. It really fell out that way, I think, because, you know, northwest Green Belt, it was, it's just sort of unique in terms of its location and the, you know, city sanctioned facilities that are there. And then Emerson is unique in that it has none of those three things, neither playgrounds, nor sports fields or picnic pavilions. And there's been, you know, a pretty consistent effort by the folks in that immediate neighborhood to secure this change. So, so it was simply a way to, you know, look at their requests and possibly balance, you know, the recommendations in terms of, you know, removing some privileges that people do value, but also providing a new facility, for example, like Cushing, and providing some other outlets for people to use. But no, I do agree that, you know, I live more on the southern side of the city, and, you know, we would, we would have Canine Corral, you know, a formal fenced dog park, and not, not one of the off-leash privileged parks.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have some concerns, but I do have one question. I believe City Council was told the sprinkler system was aged at, well, really in all of the parks, but the problem at Jason Park was because of that. I don't believe that we were told that it was due to dog damage. I could be wrong, but do you remember if that's what we were told?
I can't recall that Councilmember Russell specifically. We have sprinkler problems, you are correct. But just this year, we put twenty-five hundred dollars in grass seed out at Jason Park after our dry winter. And we followed that up with about fifteen hundred dollars worth of fertilizer as well. And we really couldn't do any of that work until we turned the sprinkler system on. Our biggest, our biggest problem, at least in that park, with the heavy use, comes during the dormant season from late October until things start to green up in March, because you have a lot of foot traffic as well as paw traffic on that area. It gets no rest, whether there's snow out there, whether there's frost, so that grass does take a beating. Much more so than, than if it were not an off-leash park.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I also heard from some residents that there was a problem with XL power lines. So not being able to turn the sprinkler system on also, is that, was there a delay in just turning the sprinkler systems on?
Yeah, I believe so. This year there was as well. We've had some issues with power, dirty power out there from XL. And we ended up putting a new box out there, electrical box, which solved a lot of those problems. So we don't have that problem moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much. So, Mayor, are we still just asking questions?
I, I think so. Right now, let's get everybody's questions out there, and let's move to discussion. I mean, we don't, we're not making a decision tonight, and hopefully the people that are listening know that. We're just, this is a study session. So let's, let's continue with the questions, if you don't mind, and then we'll circle back. Anything else? No? Okay. I'm going to let Member Questa go next, since his hand's up first time.
My, well, I thank you to staff, and thank you to the Subcommittee for putting this together. This issue's a bowl, and I think you guys have it by the horns, and I appreciate you doing that, because it is, it's, it's passion on both sides and can be contentious. My question is going to go towards Ms. Truesdale or Mr. Husbands. And I think, Director Underhill, you outlined it well. The primary concern I hear from folks that have issues with the off-leash parks is public safety. It's, it's children, it's, it's human dog interactions, and in cases, sometimes dog-to-dog interactions. Somebody pointed out to me that at the Denver off-leash dog parks, you can't be under eleven and even go in. They don't allow children under eleven in. If you're eleven to fifteen, you have to be accompanied by an adult. To me, it seems without any fencing, we've essentially built a playground within our dog park. At Jason, you could say the same at Centennial, you could say the same at Duncan. And so it's, we've heard a one-eighty, I think, of what some other cities have taken in terms of, of safety approaches to not having any types of barriers between where our children are playing and where our dogs are running off-leash. And so, while I think that a full revocation of privileges is, is a last measure, I, I think that barriers could be very helpful for these parks and maybe, you know, provide a win-win for both, that there could be more off-leash hours if we had proper barriers. So my question goes to, again, Mr. Husbands and Ms. Truesdale. And I see that in the financial implications, there is a consideration for parks sixty thousand to one hundred thousand on fencing. Did you guys consider fencing as a recommendation prior to going to that, that, let's call it a last measure of revoking privileges?
I can answer that. You know, we've, we've talked about it a lot, and I think it's really difficult, because this, I feel that, you know, this is not necessarily a dog problem, it's kind of a people problem, and how people are managing their animals. And I think you said it best when you said that we built a playground in the middle of our dog parks. But like, for me personally, like, I feel like we can't fence the children, and that seems wrong. Like, I feel like the dogs are the one who get fenced in versus the children, right? So to build barriers around all the playgrounds, that seems like a little excessive and a little dog, more, a little more dog-friendly than people-friendly and people who are actually using the parks. That's kind of my personal opinion. Mark, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
Well, I, I agree with the, the principle that, you know, the, the parks really are made and designed and have been invested in for the sake of people. And when people use their dogs there, then, you know, that's an additional privilege. But the primary use is for all Inglewood citizens, regardless of whether they're dog owners. I think from a practical standpoint, we cannot reasonably, in, 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 in the three primary parks that we're looking at, where we have both, where we have, you know, all three of these scenarios, playgrounds, sports fields, and pavilions. I don't know that it's practical to fence all of those off in order to provide open dog use there. I think it would be much simpler to look for enclosures of the kind that, you know, you see in other, in other municipalities in the area, and like Canine Corral, which seems to be a very effective facility. So I, I, I would really support thinking broadly about other places where those types of properly-designed facilities could be built. The one that's on the books is the one at Cushing. I think that it is possible to look at other places and consider different-sized fenced enclosures. But I think that the, you know, the practice of allowing for off-leash, uncontained dog use mixed with, you know, the other general public use of parks is, is, does not have a, does not have a good outlook long-term. And again, I don't, I don't know, you know, the Green Belt, Northwest Green Belt is the exception, because we have this, this one singular playground. So in that case, probably is practical to fence the playground, fence the kids, kids in and, and keep the dogs out. But I think in those other units, that's not really a practical approach.
If I could jump in from Mark's comments as well. Just wanted to let council know that up at Northwest Green Belt, that playground is on a corner of two streets, and it is already fenced off on two sides. And we would, we would only need to, if we did fence it, add one more fencing area. Depending, my recommendation, if it was up to me, I would leave it unfenced for the time being and look at the numbers of people that go up there with their dogs first, before I would invest in a fence.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, and thank you, Mr. Husbands and Ms. Truesdale. And just for my own, to state on the record, I, I'm not necessarily supporting a barrier around human areas, call that the pavilions, playgrounds, basketball court, nor the dog areas. I think that that's something that needs to be discussed. And frankly, depending upon which party I, I speak to, whether you support or oppose the, the off-leash dog parks, you get an answer that might run in accordance with what you would expect from the people that support the various uses. So my next question would go to you, Director Underhill, and I think you mentioned thirty to sixty thousand dollars potentially on a Jason Park fence. And Mr. Husbands makes a good point. Centennial has a way different layout than Duncan, than Jason, and so these are all certainly unique. When you mentioned the thirty, sixty K, in the fence that you, or the barrier that you have in mind, is that something around the off-leash areas, or more something around, if you call it the human areas? Your pavilions, basketball court, playground, et cetera?
I think doing the off-leash area would be the recommendation. If you do the other areas, there's kind of a lot of fences all over the park versus the look of an open space. So, you know, if dog park fences are done right, aesthetically pleasing and usable to keep the dogs in, that's really the goal. So I wouldn't recommend fencing other amenities in, but look at fencing primarily an area for off-leash dogs. Yeah, sir, you're on mute.
Member Questa, you're muted.
Pardon me. Final question, I think it's a quick one. You mentioned that, call it thirty to sixty K, just as a ballpark on that fencing. The grant that we could apply for could support the funding of that, or would that have to be used for the pavilions? And I think you mentioned something else for Jason Park.
Dave, do you mind answering that?
I believe we could get grant funding, a small grant, funding, anything under a hundred thousand is a small grant. There's not a lot of competition for those grants, so I would think it would be highly likely.
You're good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I'm going to move to Member Wink, and then come back, Member Stone.
There. Mr. Husbands, would you mind just sharing a little bit of the data that you have, just to refresh some of our memories kindly, on what's been so successful about the Canine Corral? You mentioned it a couple of minutes ago. Thank you.
Well, the, I, I don't have what I would consider data, but I, I do use it. And I, I think that it's a great facility, from my perspective as a Inglewood resident.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right. I'm going to ask a couple of questions, Member Stone.
I'll be quick. So, Director Underhill, you said that you, you think that it's better to fence off the off-leash area versus the amenities, but the Green Belt proposal would include fencing off the playground, not the off-leash area. Is that correct?
That's correct. That would be the difference, and that is, the Green Belt area would be the only one we would consider fencing in. But like Dave said, you know, we'd want to see how much use it's actually occurring up there. I think that's a silent park. We don't hear a lot from any of those users or any conflicts either. So, yeah, but just that playground alone, because it is a small area.
Gotcha. And then going back to, I believe it was Member Anderson who asked about situating all of our dog parks to the north of Hampton. And I remember one of the arguments against Emerson being made a off-leash park was that it's too close to Denver, so now we're proposing that we put all of our off-leash parks in immediate proximity to Denver. Is that correct?
I'll let Cater and Mark address that.
Well, you know, we have, if you look at areas where we allow for off-leash use, then it would include design facilities like Canine Corral in the south end of the city. But, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I have concerns about the Emerson Park idea, frankly. I'll just offer that, just as a, you know, individually. They have long, you know, immediate residents in the area have long used that park as an off-leash park, even though it's not permitted. I think that when, you know, if and when they were to get what they're asking for, they might, they might be surprised that, once sort of published and publicized, that they start to get folks from outside their immediate neighborhood using it, and that it won't have the same character that they've enjoyed, you know, for the, for the past, you know, decade or whatever it is, which is, you know, sort of an artifact of the fact that they're, that they're using this little pocket park in a way that's not consistent with the rules. But we were looking at ways short of recommending a complete removal of the off-leash privileges, and just trying to look at places where the, the, those three scenarios that we were most concerned about, the ones related to kids and the ones related to city rented facilities, you know, didn't pertain. And that park, you know, has and has advocates, and it doesn't have any of those three situations. So we thought it was a way of balancing the, the overall recommendation, you know, which involves rolling back some of those privileges by providing people with some other areas where they could, where they could still do it.
So I, I guess my question isn't so much about why we're suddenly proposing Emerson, but why we're shifting from saying the reason that we don't have any parks, really, to the north is because we didn't want to put off-leash dog parks in close proximity to Denver. And now we're completely reversing that to where we'll have no parks for off-leash dog use, south of Hampton, and all of them will be in the northern part of, of the city. So I'm, I'm just confused, because a few months ago, the prevailing logic around the reason for not having those parks up there was that we didn't want to promote excessive use by Denver residents. But now we're going to situate literally every single park that allows off-leash use to be as close to Denver as our parks can possibly get.
Again, the, you know, Canine Corral is the only, currently the only designed off-leash park in our system, and it's on the south end of the city, not adjacent to Denver. And I'm sure that it also gets used by non, by non-Inglewood citizens. But I, I don't think it's entirely accurate to say that all the off-leash areas would be adjacent to Denver.
Have you read any of the?
Go ahead. Go ahead. If you have more questions, I just, I feel like I stopped Member Russell from giving opinions, so I just want to make sure we open up for that.
No, I'm asking questions. Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So have you read any of the emails from residents who talk about their dogs being attacked by other animals at Canine Corral on a regular basis?
We've been reading emails about Canine Corral, Jason, Duncan, all of them, for two years. I mean, I'm getting emails every week sent to me by Dave, Dave and Christina, just constant. We have every commission meeting that we have, we have people there that are representing both of these two sides. It's, I mean, this has been an ongoing issue in our city for a very long time. And, you know, the bottom line is that not everyone's going to be happy, regardless of what we all agree to come to. Like, some people are going to be upset. And I think when it comes to, you know, being close to Denver, that's kind of like a blessing and a curse. It's great if other people want to use our parks. We don't want the off-leash dogs running amok and causing problems in our parks. But I think it's just really hard, and, you know, it's a difficult situation, and we did the best that we could to find a balance where some things were being removed, but other things were being granted. And, you know, I think that even from this point on, it will still be an evolving process. If we implement these in another two years, we might be needing to have this discussion all over again. But it's, we just need to do something, because it's really gotten out of hand.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So my last question is, did you guys look at the council request regarding park ranger costs?
Yes.
And do you have an opinion, one or the other, on those? Did you guys discuss it at all?
My personal opinion from all of these conversations that we've had is that code support just needs more help, as much help as they can get to manage this. You know, they have other things that are so much more important to pay attention to in our parks than dogs running around. So I'm very supportive of the park ranger. I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it's great for the Parks and Rec Department, too. Could be, you know, a whole personality that, you know, our kids and people in the city can connect with. I'm very excited about that, but I still think, like, that's a great step, but I still think we need to figure out better ways to support code enforcement all the way around.
I couldn't agree with you more on that one. I think everybody knows my love for code enforcement. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Stone. Sorry, I was interrupting you. There is someone that is listening in that's put their hand up, and I just want to let you know, this is not, unless it's one of your committee members, Christina or others, that this isn't the time for the public to ask questions during study session. But I do have a couple of questions.
I put my hand up?
Oh, I see yours now. Yep. But there's somebody else in the attendees, I think, Colleen, somebody. But go ahead, David.
One thing that I wanted to point out, too, with Councilmember Stone's comments, was that Inglewood Unleashed also supports a licensure program, and that is one of their recommendations. And I think that, along with whatever compromises or decisions council wants to make, would be beneficial. I think the ranger is a great idea, and I also think having license fees would be good in a way to kind of control some of the concerns about non-residents as well using the parks. I mean, they would have the fee. I mean, they would have the fee, they would be able to access the parks using a license as well at a greater cost. But that's something that I think Canine, Canine, Inglewood Unleashed came up with and I think it's a really good idea.
Thank you for mentioning that. I should, I should have mentioned that as well. And it's 90 degrees in my apartment right now because my AC went out. So, sorry if I'm talking slower, forgetting things.
Thank you. I do have like several questions and first of all, I want to tell the subcommittee, thank you for the work you've been doing for quite a while. I am sorry that perhaps we weren't paying attention along the way on how critical this was, that, that this has gotten really bad. Because I certainly wasn't getting the number of, of emails about fences until, until more recently. But I also wanted to say, a couple of questions about the, the parks were created a long, long time ago when off-leash was the norm. So, I, I, I rub, I, I just get a little uptight when we say they weren't created for off-leash. They were created for everything when they were created and it wasn't until, what was 2001, that we actually said you had to have your dogs on leash. So, no parks ever really been totally created with, with that recently for us and Canine Corral came around. But I also wanted to ask about that. When you talk to people about Canine Corral, I have heard such mixed messages about experiences there. Is your, is there any recommendation for how to make that better, that's actually more feasible financially? I have a dog, we've taken her twice there, terrible experience both with people and their dog and with just dirt everywhere. So, my dogs are a mess, my dog was a mess when, well, we had two before, but is there, is there a recommendation for creating more there with grass? Because I think most people are saying that's what all these fenced areas will turn into.
Yeah, so I'll let, I'll let Dave Lee, he has a really good handle of the history of Canine Corral and the situation with grass and why it is the way it is today, as well as comparisons of other dog parks or have a similar setup that are kind of in the same situation. So, I'll let Dave take that on.
I think the short answer is, I don't believe in a fenced acre and a half park that we would be able to maintain grass if we had irrigation. When we built the park, we knew that it was not going to be irrigated because of the cost. You know, obviously, we spent well over $100,000 in building that park. Later on, Inglewood Unleashed was tasked with fundraising because they wanted water, drinking water to the park. They did a fundraiser over about three years and were able to raise about $3,500. When we realized that they were not going to make that goal of $20,000, we stepped in and used open space money to put water down there. So, just running a potable water line for the drinking fountain down there was a $20,000 endeavor. In order to even consider putting irrigation in down there, we would have to get another tap, probably three-quarter to an inch tap to run water down there from a separate line and then add in an irrigation system. And I have no idea what that would cost, but that's significantly more than $20,000.
Thanks. The other question, the other question is Emerson. Emerson folks, I understood as really wanting it to be off-leash for themselves only. And I think one of our last meetings before we were in COVID Zoom meetings, there were several people who came and said, or maybe it was through email, I could be wrong, that they, they didn't want it opened up to other people. Did anybody come and say that to you all?
Kate, Mark?
Well, I don't, I don't know that I recall that the folks that were advocating for making Emerson off-leash ever stated explicitly that, that we should somehow regulate the people who are able to use it in that way. And I'm, I'm, of course, not at all clear how you would go about doing it like that. I do think they, yeah, I do think, I do think they think that they're going to be able to use it in the sort of exclusive way that they have and that they are probably mistaken that it will attract, you know, once it's part of the, you know, made it part of the sort of the off-leash inventory, it will attract additional users that aren't aware of it now or who wouldn't choose to go there because it's not allowed. It's not, you know, currently allowed to run your dog off-leash there. So, again, yes, I think that they have enjoyed a strange sort of artifact of having a, a, a not very known pocket park where they sort of are able to use it as their exclusive area.
Well, yeah, that's why I bring it up is I don't believe I ever heard anyone from that group wanting it to be open to the whole public. And so, I, I think the justification of making it one then doesn't quite fit with what I think the reality probably can be. The second question I have is about fines. What is our fine? And I was looking for it just now. I thought I saw it in the reading material, but I can't seem to find it now. Is, what is a fine for? Is it $100? What is it? How much is it? Dave Lewis, if you could answer that?
I can answer that. The fines are established by the court. But my understanding is the first violation would be $50, a subsequent violation would be 100.
Okay.
Third is 150 and a fourth is a mandatory court.
Okay. I thought I remembered 100, something like that. Thank you. That's helpful. And then, why did the committee not come up with the, sort of a compromise or something a little different of just curtailing the hours all year, making them very non-family time hours and just like six to eight in the morning or eight to 11 at night and all year long and just say let's, was that ever a consideration?
Yeah, we've definitely discussed changing the hours and the best way to communicate that, but you know, we, people are going to use the parks as they want, even if it's without hours. You know, I live by Bates Logan and that used to be one of the off-leash dog parks and now it's no longer, but I saw people running their dogs and playing fetch all the time. So, we thought, you know, the hours seem to be quite an issue with people understanding. It leads to a lot of the confusion, people, you know, kind of getting aggressive with each other about dogs. So, we thought it would be easier to just remove that piece because there was so much, so much confusion and just do, if you are an off-leash dog park, whether you're enclosed or not enclosed, it's just 24 hours a day. And that just completely like removes that, you know, question mark for citizens and then code enforcement having to enforce things like that. It just, we thought it was just a little bit of a messy thing that maybe we didn't need.
Do you think people will stop running their dogs in places that, like you just said?
I think that people are just going to do kind of what they want to do because that's what they do. I would love it if they would, you know, recognize that it's everyone's park, but like I've said before, I really, you know, it's, it's about the people and just them and not so much the dogs even, but if we can do anything to try to help create some boundaries and guidelines, then that's definitely what the goal is.
Great. Let's open it up. Member Russell, any questions, comments, whatever? Let's start the discussion. You launch us.
So, what, actually, I did have another question in some of the hearing that took place in that, Dave, I'm assuming it meant Dave Lewis rather than Dave Lee and Christina were funneling emails to the task force? And I guess, the, part of the problem is this really blindsided city council. We were not getting emails. I mean, occasionally I would hear a complaint about something, but in the last month or six weeks, all of a sudden, we've been flooded with emails. And, I mean, I wasn't aware until we started getting flooded with emails. So, is there a way we can fix this problem so we're not blindsided now? I mean, like tonight, I feel like we've been discussing several things that really, you know, there are a myriad of problems, not just the off-leash dog parks and what we're going to do about them. And the whole thing that started this for council was sending back the question to Parks and Rec, shall we make Emerson an off-leash dog park? So, I think this is just kind of ballooned because, I don't know, I think council should have been more aware of some of this from the beginning, whether it was code enforcement bringing it to council or Parks and Rec bringing it to council. But I'm going to leave it at that for now because I just, I think that's one thing we as council need to talk about, too. Not just with this committee, but what, what happens with other committees.
Member Russell, do you have any opinions on some of the suggestions made?
Some of the suggestions made, I, I think that we should take out the, from the picture, Cushing Park, Emerson Park and the Northwest Green Belt because, and really, I guess I do, I think we need to decide, are we going to allow off-leash use in those three parks that has been suggested? We're going to take them out of the picture now, Jason Centennial and, and Duncan. I, I think, I guess what I'm thinking at Centennial Park, we could limit it to certain areas. There's a natural divider in that park over there and you could put the dogs on one side of the lake and that wouldn't be a problem. Duncan Park may be more problematic and I, because we're unable to get accurate information and accurate reports about what's happening in each single park, I don't know how council can make an educated decision. I think Jason Park might be good if we fenced part of it, like put a division between the, a fence to divide the north side of the park from the south side of the park. And I do know some people have emailed me or called me that they'll be taking their dogs on leash and then other dogs that are off-leash run up to them and then they begin having problems. When we took our dog for training, we were told by the trainer, you should not walk your dog where there are other dogs off-leash because dogs on a leash tend to be more aggressive if they're on the leash and there's another dog coming up towards them. So, I think a lot of the problems that go on are education of the, the citizens and I think this is a difficult problem. I, and I would, at this point, hate to, I want to protect both people. I want to protect the children, but also the dog park users have been doing this for years. And, I mean, they're not educated. I think some of it is a code enforcement problem. I don't know the solution to that, whether it's park rangers or what it is, but I think that's, that's another piece. So, I mean, I don't know if it's, it's kind of clear as mud, if you ask me.
All right, thank you. Member Questa.
Thank you. Mr. Husbands and Ms. Truesdale, when did you guys publish these recommendations again? I, I know it was in the past few months here. I'm thinking March.
It was the end of May.
End of May, okay. Well, in defensive staff here, this just came out of a commission. I, I don't think that, that they need to get in front of every issue. We were dealing with this back in early 2020 when we were having staff going out and do education. So, this, at least for me, it didn't come out of left field. This has been an issue ongoing and I don't hold staff accountable for this. This is something that it's, again, it's just something that we need to fix and it's something that I think we can correct. But Dave, you touched on an issue that I have heard is a complaint from folks that, that support off-leash and that is that they don't like just dirt parks. And Canine Corral obviously is at that point. If we were to provide that barrier at Jason Park, the irrigation exists. Would we be able to maintain grass there?
I think that's a difficult question. I think it would be a difficult maintenance task. We would probably end up having to close it during part of the growing season in order to maintain it. And if that's acceptable by all, then I think the answer is yes. But to just fence an area off and call it a dog park in Jason Park without any maintenance is going to be problematic.
I see. Okay.
I've looked at Berkeley Park and Barnum Park or in some of Denver's larger parks and they were fenced off, they had irrigation, they are dirt at this point. And I want to make a clarification on Canine Corral, too. We put down there 125 cubic yards every six months of wood chips that we recycle from Christmas trees. So, it's not necessarily all dirt and I've asked the guys to continue to monitor that so that when we do have issues like that, the chips get worn off, that we go ahead and put more wood chips down in there.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think I can really see both sides on this issue. We've, my, I've taken my kids to Jason Park and I felt like I was hearing the, that Director Underhill, the same story happened to me. My kids came down the slide and met a growling dog at the bottom of the slide and that's, that's a real, that's a real problem. And with, with, with regards to that, do we, do we know of any, do we have any reports of actual, you know, bites or dog attacks at some of these parks that are near playgrounds? Because, I mean, is this a real safety? I mean, to me, it's, if we, if we keep going like this, it's inevitable that at some point we're going to have something like that. Has it happened already?
Oh.
Yep.
You got me to answer that for you. Our statistics are only as accurate as what report we receive or what officer-initiated activities that we engage in. Frequently, dog reports or dog aggression goes unreported. Jason Park is one example where some of the emails and things that you've received recently or even conversations, we haven't, we in code enforcement have not heard of. The last bite at Jason Park was within the last couple of months and it is a known offender who has received violations in the past and it was a dog-on-dog bite. We have had two dog bites at Centennial Park, one involving an animal and one involving a child during non-off-leash times. The last dog bite that we had reported at Canine Corral was in October of 2019. But again, we have no reports of any activities or violations since the first of the year at Canine Corral. Things are just not being reported to us and we're not observing in-progress violations. And Duncan Park, we don't have a reported dog bite at that park in the last six months.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's very helpful. And I think to me, that's a problem we need to, we need to solve. I don't know if I'm in favor of, of closing all the southern dog parks according to the recommendation. That seems pretty, pretty excessive at this point, but moving towards more of a fenced approach over the long run or something like that, we have to keep the kids safe. And I, I mean, I, I brought my dog also to Jason Park with, with my family and we've enjoyed that as well. Like, I have lots of friends who take their dogs there and I really appreciate that, but I am concerned about the safety issue over the long run. In the intermediate, it seems to make sense to have some sort of time, time limitation that's more, a little more aggressive than what we currently have and have that posted and educated a little better and maybe a little more aggressive in issuing fines to try to curtail that and make, make it feel like there's at least some portion of the day where families can feel safe bringing their kids or people who keep their dogs on a leash can feel safe bringing their dogs through, through some of those parks. So, that, that's kind of my, my ideas right off the bat is to kind of, kind of find some middle ground and work towards a fencing solution for the, for the longer run. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I just want to start off by saying that I, I at least personally have been aware of this issue. Obviously, being the liaison of the Parks and Rec Commission, I was aware that they were looking into this since 2018. Also part of Code Enforcement Advisory Committee, I know that this came up a couple of times in the sense that there was a feeling that code enforcement was being a little bit too stringent in the rules, you know, based on some feedback, but then also there were people from Emerson Park that brought it to our attention at city council meetings last year. So, this definitely, I don't feel that this has popped up on us. I knew that it was an issue. And there were citizens that are also, obviously emailing us about some of the issues around Rottola Park and Bates Logan that aren't off-leash parks. So, yeah, so this definitely is just a situation that, that's coming to a head now, just based off the recommendation that came fourth of June. But in terms of recommendations, I think the first thing that we need to acknowledge is that regardless, we need to look at additional code enforcement officers or park rangers because regardless, it's going to be, regardless of the way we go, we're going to have to have more enforcement. So, that's something that we'll probably have to discuss during the budget meetings. I did like the suggestion by Inglewood Unleashed that there does need to be visible signage at more parks around the trash receptacles, just to make people aware of whether or not it is an off-leash park or what the hours are. That needs to happen as well. One of the things that I have an issue with is that we're not consistent in our off-leash hours year-round. And I think it was part of your slide, Director Underhill, at the very beginning where it's... And I think it was part of your slide, Director Underhill, at the very beginning where it's, you know, six to 11 during certain months of the year and then it's 6:00 to 11:00 PM, like an 18-hour window or whatever it happens to be during the winter months. And I just don't agree that, that we should have two different times based on the season. I think it should be more consistent. And then just in terms of personal experiences, you know, I have not experienced the situations that Director Underhill stated at the, at the beginning where there were dogs running into the park, into the playground area, into the shelter areas. Obviously, I spend most of my time at Bates Logan Park. I haven't seen that, but I have experienced issues where dogs do approach me and my dog and my son. You know, it, it's pretty difficult when you do have a dog that's approaching you and your dog where you're trying to shield your son, trying to shield the dog back as well from a second dog. That's very difficult. Like, you know, to me, that's something I can handle, but there's a lot of citizens where they have younger kids. I have an eight-year-old. He could stay a little bit further back. But you know, if you have a two or three-year-old, that's going to make it very difficult. If you're, you know, one of our older populations, that's going to be a very difficult situation as well. So I, I just don't like the idea that people feel that all dogs want to be approached by your dog. And I, I just feel that that's, that's a situation that I think can turn worse. Sounds like it has turned worse in, in, in certain situations. So I, to me, that is just a very tough situation for someone to be under. And so I, I, you know, me personally, you know, obviously we need to discuss where we're going to go with this. I personally don't feel that it is, in terms of safety, I, I just don't know how we could continue without having fenced areas if we're going to have dogs off-leash in the city. I definitely think that we need to look at that. I like the recommendations by, by the Parks and Rec Commission in, in terms of, you know, what, you know, obviously we spent a couple of years talking about this as, as speaking to stakeholders. So I, I do like some of the recommendations. But in terms of Emerson Park, I actually do want to reach out to some of the neighbors there. I know that we had a couple of people from Emerson in the last council meeting that said they were against it. But I want to kind of get an idea of that because I'm not sure if that really holds a dog park, but if it's a fenced area, maybe. But I, I definitely think that we need to look at this. And I guess in, in, just in closing, I would be hesitant to making these changes effective immediately if, if anybody's looking to go down that route. You know, obviously what the situation we're, we're under with the pandemic and COVID, I don't want to make any drastic changes. I also don't want to kind of react based off just emotion at the moment in terms of, I, I, you know, obviously it's a difficult situation for everyone. I'm well aware of the issues that we're having and at the parks. But I definitely want to dwell on this a little bit more, but I think in terms of where I stand, I, I do think that we need to start fencing in some of these areas if we're going to have off-leash dog parks. And if we want to do some sort of licensing thing, that's fine, but I, to me, it's not a, a priority, but I do feel that we need to move forward with some sort of fenced-in area, maybe starting next year. Thank you.
Member Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question and then a couple of comments. I'll do comment, question, comment. So I, I took my little dog to Jason Park twice a day, every day for, from 2006 to 2017 when I joined council. And I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. Unfortunately, so this, this is very tricky. I've seen it work beautifully, but I have seen incidents. The question I have, I think it might be a Dave Lee question, is around the company that I believe the city employs to dispose of poop. Now, I'm not even clear if it's loose, unclaimed dog potty droppings or it's the, the trash receptacles that are dedicated toward that. But I'm wondering if we employ that just for Canine Corral or does that service extend to some of the other parks where we know that dogs frequent? So pause.
It's in Canine Corral only and from the receptacles only.
Very good. Thank you, Dave. So my thought based on the presentation from the Parks and Rec Subcommittee this evening and based on my experience, you know, just generally where council is, the information I have in my head at this moment is that I feel, I, I would, I feel we would may benefit from seeing maybe some more recommendations that are, someone stated it very articulately earlier, not so on the extreme, close all or do this, but something that's more accommodating of the, the take the dogs out of the parks and we love our dogs, you know, something that meets everyone's needs more in the middle, if it's possible. It just bodes so well for our community and the sense of community that we have in Inglewood. And I just have this feeling that a, a sharp and, and such a severe change might, might, might not be the best for us right now. Well, maybe right now, as, as member, as Mayor Protem said, isn't best anyway, but as we're discussing it. So I, I would love to see some recommendations that are perhaps more in the middle in terms of accommodating both sides. And, and I would like to see recommendations for the parks. I would like to just maybe hear, hear them in the context of our discussions, at least for the last two and a half years since I've been here, based on the park's master plan. Just so I can understand that the long-term planning and funding, Dave Lee, you'll remember this, that, that we've discussed at least since I've been here and I know it started before Mr. Cust and I, this planning around our parks and improving our parks, like Cushing and the expenses. So that doesn't, doesn't get slighted in any way. I just want to maybe hear that context as we discuss these changes so that we're thinking of all of the discussions that have come before, maybe not speaking in isolation of any of that. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Member Stone.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Dave Lewis a question and then I have some thoughts to follow up with afterwards. Dave, could you provide us with kind of your perspective on on the proposal and, and the situation as it stands? And if you have any recommendations of your own as far as enforcement versus, you know, no more off-leash at all or, you know, off-leash in certain places, that kind of stuff?
Thanks for asking that question. I, I don't think the saying completely off-leash is going to solve, no off-leash is going to solve the bigger picture here. I think, meeting with Inglewood Off Leash and some local citizens, that there are some new techniques and tactics that we can try to employ. As you all know, we're overtasked here at code enforcement. Having 603 interactions with the public regarding off-leash has also had consequences from our bigger role. And you'll see from your council packet, the statistics that we did have a decline in our enforcement for growth because we were using our proactive time to do proactive education and enforcement in the parks. And I think this is, we need to change the culture within our off-leash park. And I think that starts with our citizens. I don't think it's just district enforcement education from the city. And we really need to work, and Inglewood Off Leash has come forward and said they want to put together with me and the Parks Department and, and Parks Ambassador Program. I'm very fortunate that we have a small $500 grant that we can use towards that education component and really have citizen volunteers come forward, who are those park ambassadors, to reinforce some of the park rules and some of the educational components. But I think if we are going to go to the enforcement action, we need more help. We need more help here in the code, either the code enforcement division, the creation of a park ranger program. And in the middle of COVID, I don't know what that's going to look like or how we implement that, but I, as I say, we have just over two and a half code enforcement officers and two and a half animal control officers because our tasks are split so, a huge variety. I support the parts of this proposal. I support what the parks is doing. I support what Inglewood Unleashed is doing. I, I think we also need some priorities set by council. I think I came and asked for code enforcement prior to the first of the year. Where do you want to see our priorities? Where do you want to see our enforcement actions? Because we're being pulled in so many directions. We kind of need some help with that. I will tell you that there is a level of, of privilege with some of our parks and the way they're being used. I was out with Christina and my, my truck was parked in the parking lot at Jason Park. It was completely visible. I'm sitting in the pavilion in full uniform and I was still pointing out to Inglewood Unleashed and to the staff every violation that was taking place. So I think there's a lot more different and creative ways to solve this than just removing it and just strictly enforcement because in the day and age that we are, I've already heard complaints from people at the Parks and Rec Commission and from citizens, they don't like the way we're doing enforcement. Last year, we were told we are too heavy-handed. We're overstepping our bounds. So we're on this double-edged sword. You want us to do this or you not want us to do this? Where is the happy medium? What can we do? And that's why we really launched this Inglewood Unleashed campaign. And I still think we have some more, more work to do with that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I, I am, we have, I don't want to take much longer on this, so let's get really succinct kind of next steps from each of you, what you think you would like to see happen. So Member Stone, did you want to start with that or are you?
Sure. No, that's fine. That totally works. I'm very interested in a park rangers program. I've been thinking about this for quite some time now. And as Member Sierra mentioned, for some of this, this isn't new. This is stuff that we've been hearing from constituents for quite some time now. And actually, something that I talked about with folks before I even got elected. So this has been something that I've, I've been very aware of myself. I do think that a park rangers program would be very effective. I think it takes work off of code enforcement's plate. And I think it actually relieves some work off of our police officers because we won't have police officers or code enforcement responding to something in the parks that is as genial as dog poop. The other thing that I would like to look at is like three, three and a half foot tall fences in the existing parks that permit off-leash. I, I personally am not interested in eliminating all of the southern off-leash parks excluding Canine Corral as Mr. Husbands pointed out, it is in fact an off-leash park, but I'm not interested in eliminating the other ones personally. I, I don't have a problem with Emerson becoming an off-leash park, but I don't think there's any way to limit it to only Inglewood citizens or especially to only people who live in the vicinity. If it's going to be an off-leash park, it's going to be an off-leash park and everybody who wants to bring their dog off-leash is going to be there. And I think that's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
I, I muted myself, so you didn't have to hear my dog. Ironic. So let's do this. He, he gave forth things, park rangers, check into fences in areas of off-leash, do not eliminate southern border or southern areas, and then Emerson maybe. Let's check into that further. So why don't we do this? Council, when you speak, say, yeah, I agree with that or that, or here's another one, and then add more to it. So let's, let's play off of what he did and let's just keep moving. So next up is Member Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that we should start looking into fences. And you know, I, I don't want an eight-foot chain-link fence and I think there is some beauty to Duncan, Jason, and it'd be easy to aesthetically kind of change the feel there. And so I, I think that we can have a barrier that keeps people away from dogs and that also hopefully does not totally interrupt the view as well. So I do like that. I think that if we can start getting quotes or ideas on how that could lay out, that would be great. It does seem that there's something time-sensitive and potentially applying for a grant to potentially procure funding for that. And if that's something we can put in motion, I think it, it certainly wouldn't hurt. And I know that there's never any guarantees on those, but if, if we can apply and if we can get the money, I think that would certainly make this conversation a bit more palatable to everybody. The thing that I like about the fences is that then you know you're either in that right area or you're not. And I think that that helps with education. It isn't where are the boundaries, what are the hours? If it's a fenced area, then to me, we can loosen up all the hours. At least that would be my initial thought. So I like the fencing and I think that helps with education as well. In terms of the park rangers, I'm happy to continue with that conversation. But for me right now, I, I feel like fencing resolves a lot if we can do it in, in a way that's still aesthetic and, and, you know, really doesn't interrupt the great fields that we have in our parks now, which I, I think we can achieve that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with all of that. I guess I, I still have to come around on the Emerson. So if we're saying that all off-leash areas are going to be fenced in, I'm, I'm definitely for that. I also think, just to add to it, I do think that we need to add additional signage at each of the parks and just let people know which ones are, obviously, if you see a fence, you're going to know that that's the off-leash area, but the parks that aren't, like Bates Logan and some of the other ones, there should be additional signage around the trash receptacles. I guess it's a moot point about making the off-leash hours a specific time year-round. But I do want to talk to the Emerson Park neighbors and just find out, before we move forward in that direction, whether or not that that should be a fenced-in off-leash area. And I guess with Cushing, I guess it's more of a question and it could be a council request, but I'm for that as well. But also just want to understand if there's any type of impact with everything that's going on with the city center redevelopment. I don't think it is, but I just want to verify that before moving forward with that. But other than that, it, it all sounds good to me.
So you're, you're adding, add Cushing in and checking out that recommendation?
Yeah. So I, yeah, the Cushing, just because that, that has been in discussion for many years about using that land for it. So now that we're doing the city center redevelopment talks, I just want to make sure that that's still feasible.
Okay. Member Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with the ranger. I'm in favor of the park ranger solution. I'm in favor very heavily on fences for dog areas. I also want to add to the fences for dog areas, the point that Member Questa brought up about this rule in other cities, that we mark or set parameters around those fenced areas ala no children under a certain age in those areas to minimize some of that threat. And I do agree that the fences alone will take care of a lot of the calls and the burden on code enforcement, on our code enforcement officer team and, and removes that, that liability. So that solution, keeping the age group under fences, rangers, maybe, maybe even a citizen group of rangers. I mean, I think Mark Husbands was a ranger or is trained. We probably have rangers in the community, so maybe there's something there. I would love to see more recommendations from the Subcommittee of Parks and Rec. And finally, if Emerson Park, then I want to open it up. Why are we considering, why are we not considering all of them? Let's be fair. Are we handpicking a couple because of some cer- certain reason or because somebody said this and somebody said that? And now we're talking about two parks? Just a thought. Are we evaluating properly or fairly or in a sensible, critical-thinking way or randomly picking stuff and going with that? Thank you.
All right. Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think I'm in agreement with everything I've heard from the fences to park rangers. I think they're all great, long-term ideas. I don't know how long some of that would take getting grants, that kind of thing. I do think we need something more in the short term and intermediate maybe. And I don't know whether that's looking at, at the hours or restricting some parks in some different ways or, or something like, that's my only kind of addition to the conversation is do we want to look at restricting hours or additional signage that, something that we can do more immediately? That's, that's all for me.
Great. Thank you, Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do have one question for Dave Lee. Can we do grants for more than one park at a time? I know you talked about Jason Park, but if we were going to put dog fences up at Centennial and Duncan Park, can we do grants for those fences as well?
Yes, I believe we can do that.
Okay, thank you. And, and with that, I am, I am for fencing the dog areas with something that, chain-link fence that doesn't impede the view for either side. But I am all about safety. The park ranger discussion, I think that's more of a, a little bit of a long-term discussion that we need to tie into the budget talks. And so I would hold off on that a little bit. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I agree with most of everything, except I am not a real big fan of opening up Emerson for an off, off-leash totally. I think there are areas, people in that area that have contacted me. I'm sure they've contacted you all too, that feel like there's just a very small group, want to keep it for their own. And I want to make sure that that isn't happening with this and that we aren't responding to something that a small group asked for but doesn't really want the unintended consequences of. So I want to protect that neighborhood, I guess, from being inundated. It's an awfully small park. So I want to protect that neighborhood, I guess, from being inundated. It's an awfully small park. I really would like to look at ours. I think that if we go from six to eight in the morning or six to nine in the morning, that would help tremendously. And then perhaps 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM at night, that allows adults to use it with their dogs and families. Maybe, maybe, yeah, you don't like that dog. No, I, I think that would solve a lot of things with the families. When I went to Jason Park and watched several times the last week, it's a, it's an accident waiting to happen because you take your dog, you, you have him in the car, you stop there right by the playground, you let him out and boom, there's the playground. And so having some kind of a fence, I'm not a big fan of enclosing. I'm more of a fan of creating a fence that says this side is the dogs, this side are the kids, and then setting some hours. So I'd like to hear some other kind of hours from our Subcommittee, if there can be some exploration there. And then in enforcement, Dave Lewis, bless your heart. I have a feeling that you found the sweet spot because you're getting it from both sides. And you're right, the last group that we had was very much wanting us to open more up. And now we've got more that want us to close it down. So maybe we've hit both. But I, I don't think that whatever we come up with is going to solve it. Because as we've all seen, people take their dogs to any park they want and run them free. And we just are, are going to have to live with that reality, but keeping enforcing and, and I think upping signs will help too. But I think, I think we should never rest on this because I don't think it's going to be ever totally over, unfortunately. And then I'm a big fan of licensing. I think we need to start licensing. And particularly if we're going to have your dog on an off-leash, that they be licensed, both in the city and then anybody comes from outside be, you know, quite, quite a bit more, so that we can pay for a ranger. I just think that's expected. I have family that live in different parts of the country, have asked them, because they take their, their dogs to off-leash. One got fined a hundred bucks on the spot for running their dog on the beach. The other one went late at night because they start them at 9:00 PM and go till like midnight. And they don't like doing it that late either because it's nerve-wracking to be out late at night. So I, I realize there's some different things we have to consider still. But I appreciate the work that everybody's been doing to help us get this far. And sorry that I haven't been paying attention to those who have been having so many troubles with dogs coming up to them and, and being, you know, contentious. Okay, Mayor Protem.
Now, I was going to say, just to add on, I think we need to understand what we're going to do in the short term, whether or not we're going to ask the city manager to step up enforcement. I know that they're stretched thin. And, you know, and to Officer Lewis's point, I think, definitely I think we need to work with, or Code Enforcement Advisory Committee needs to provide priorities. So it can come back to council so we can identify what's going to be for the summer months, winter months and so forth. But I, I think in terms of, you know, yeah, just what we're going to do in the short term, I, I do like the idea of what, shortening those hours. I think you said, was it six to eight in the morning, eight to 11 at night? But then again, it's just going to be an enforcement issue. So I think I would be okay with doing that in the short term while we figure out fences or whatever the next plan is in terms of getting this on the agenda, I guess.
Yeah. Right, yeah. Okay, great. Member Anderson.
I, I just wanted to weigh in on the licensing thing, but I, I think that's a great, is there a way to, to just restrict license? Is, is there, would this be a license to own a dog or a license to use the parks? I'd like to differentiate between that. And I think I would lean more towards the license to have your dog off-leash in our off-leash areas.
That was what I was suggesting, yeah.
All right, yeah. Okay, that, that was the only clarification I have, is that's, that's the way I would lean on that. And also, I, I think our, our parks should be primarily for Inglewood citizens. And if that means not permitting the licensure for people who don't live in Inglewood or having a much, much higher rate for licensure or something, something like that, we should not be having our taxpayers pay for enforcement for people who don't live in Inglewood. So these should be parks for, for our citizens.
Thank you, Member Stone.
So I'm sure you could tell by my reactions that I'm vehemently opposed to you making, or to anyone making it so that I cannot use these parks with my dog. And seeing as how I have to be up by 4:00 AM, 5:00 AM at the latest to go to work, all the times that you suggested would make it impossible for me to go to the park with my dog. I would like to touch on something though that you brought up, which was citations, which I hadn't thought of until you mentioned it. You know, those citations, where does that money go? And could we do something to redirect money from citations regarding off-leash dogs in parks? Or, you know, dogs, dog owners that are not properly handling their dogs into a fund to help pay for park rangers? I know that that's often a funding mechanism for other things. And, you know, if, if that's something that we could do, I don't know how it works with the courts on that. And then, honestly, I got so worked up over the hours that I don't remember what the third thing was. I'm sorry.
All right, Member Wink.
The licensing, totally on board. Love licensing.
Love licensing as well. I really love it. We, we used to take our dog to the Boulder Off Leash, something or another, and she, we paid for a little tag. And I love the idea of the very high fees for not having that, paid for that license. And I also like what Anderson suggests, Member Anderson suggested about maybe a higher licensing fee requirement for non, or not for residents at all, or, but something to distinguish or to at least protect the parks for Inglewood citizens at the least. So they're not feeling some of the complaints we've heard, that non-citizens are kind of treating them in a not-so-pleasant way in their, our parks. So love that whole licensing and fines, heavy fines piece of it. Thank you.
Member Questa.
Thank you. I think, you know, Mr. Lewis brings up a great point in that, you know, they, they were told that they've been heavy-handed and now they're a little bit loose. I think that the memo that Chief Collins gave us had the 600 citations citywide. And there could be duplicates in there, but there wasn't a single, or no, 600 with seven actual citations. So 593 people walked with a warning. So if I'm at the park, I'm not afraid to break the rules because I might walk with a warning. But, you know, I'm not getting hit with a hundred-dollar fine. And so I know it's easy for me to tell code enforcement to go write a bunch of tickets, but we might have to consider that again, that, that if people are going to be breaking those rules and, and we do want to help, you know, offset costs, that, that tickets would have to be written at a certain point. And, and I think he's correct, that prioritization needs to come from council. And I'd certainly engage in that conversation if we'd like to.
Okay, tonight, would you say yes to giving citations?
You know, I, I, we could talk about this a li- a little bit longer. At large, a whole nother question is what's at large, you know, right now as it stands? And, and there's the interesting point of what are the boundaries right now? That's why I like the fencing, is then you know exactly where the boundaries are. Do I support citations? Absolutely. Do I still want code enforcement to have discretion? Yes, that, that, that they can, if they don't want to give one in every instance, sure. But I, I absolutely think if they need to dish out a ticket, yes. I think up to this point or the past few months, we still were just doing education. I think we're well past the point of education. And yes, I have zero qualms about them issuing citations whenever they feel needed.
Thank you. Member Russell.
Thank you. I am on board with licensing for, for off-leash parks. Actually, I do believe that the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee could look at the fine situation. And actually, I think they probably could check into also being able to issue fines immediately instead of the way that our whole system is set up right now. So that would be my suggestion, is that we take that issue to the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee. And if they want to weigh in somewhere, that'd be helpful. I'd like to see us do a warning, a ticket, and then it goes up each time and get moving on this. And, and that is in exchange for leaving the parks open for off-leash in some manner. I agree with Mayor Protem. I think, you and I talked earlier this week about this. I don't want to shut down the parks in the midst of this pandemic when people become accustomed to being outside more than maybe normal because they're at home. And I don't want to create problems for families either who are also out a lot more. But I, I'd like it to be pretty clear that we're moving in a direction that keeps them separated. Fencing's going to come a little later. I'm really positive about ours. And I don't care, maybe the hours are a little different than what I suggested, but we need to have a group take a look at what's, what's possible. And having them open from November to whenever it is, all the time, is crazy because families go out when it's November, December as well. So at least I took my kids out at that point. And if we're in this pandemic through that, they're going to definitely be wanting to take their kids up. All right, so I, Christina, do you feel like you got some direction from us?
Yeah, we've got a lot of direction and a lot of things to consider. So I appreciate your time and staff will reconvene and the Subcommittee as well and, and kind of figure out next steps. It sounds like the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee is going to have a little say as well for that side. But yeah, we'll, we'll take this back to the Subcommittee and figure out what we can bring back to you in the near future to make recommendations for the off-leash program.
Actually, can I, can I, can I jump in real quick? Regarding, so I'm a little bit confused about the role that CEAC has in, in terms of issuing citations. Because to me, that seems like a similar issue that we encountered last year, where we were going against charter and they were giving direction to, to staff and, or at least to code enforcement. I'm not sure if that's really something that we should be looking into. I think this is just City Manager Lewis and code enforcement making a decision on whether to issue citations. And obviously, City Council kind of weighed in on where we want to go with that.
Yeah, I certainly don't want to slow the process down, but Member Russell.
That is the job of the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee. I absolutely agree with Mayor Protem that it is not to direct city staff, but it is to address code enforcement issues and the way finding takes place. And Supervisor Lewis is actually on that committee and can give direction and bring that information to the committee as well.
Thank you. I think wherever we think the groups need to weigh in, let's do that. I would like to encourage us to get this moving quicker than, than not. And I'm sure tonight, we're going to hear from enough people that will make it compelling to go a little faster than just sitting around too. All right, so we're going to take a break. We need a five-minute break. Member Stone needs to open the windows in his apartment. So let's take a five-minute break. Let's be back at 7:46. Is that okay? Yep, great. Taking a break. Recess, five minutes.
While on recess, I did want to address the phone number calling in under last four digits, 2946. If you would give us your name.
Is the number you're referring to 720-226-2946?
Yes, ma'am.
That is me, Jessica Simone.
Jessica Simone. Thank you.
The temperature immediately dropped by about five degrees.
We don't have air conditioning in my house, so I just turn fan on.
Oh my God, how do you survive this?
We open up the windows at night, blow air in from fans, and then close them down when we go for a walk at 6:30. And it tastes pretty cool until just about now.
I couldn't do it. There's no way. It's funny too, because I'm originally from the desert, you know, I should be used to the heat. But everybody has AC there.
Yeah, but I'm in a house with overhangs and it does shade quite a bit. If you're in an apartment setting, condos, it's hard. That's hard.
Yeah, and I'm northwest-facing, so I'm just, you know, over half the day I'm getting it. And I'm second floor, so I can get all the heat from the apartment below me. And, you know, half my AC goes to cool the apartment below me and...
I feel for you, Member Stone. Just feel for you.
I can't wait. I can't wait to get into a house. Looking forward to it so much.
All right, everybody back. Turn your videos on and we'll get the rest of this going. Member Anderson, are you still there? All right, we'll resume the meeting. The Agenda Item 5 is consideration of minutes of previous session. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the regular council meeting of July 6, 2020? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of the July 6, 2020 meeting.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, could I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Member Stone. Please vote by roll call.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show, seven nights.
Thank you. There is no Agenda 6. Agenda Item 7 is recognition of scheduled public comment. And I'll read the section on here in just a minute. But Counsel, we have had varying amounts of time that we have allotted for this in the past. It used to be 45 minutes, then we sort of said, let's do away with that and maybe try and hold it to an hour. We have over 40 people that have signed up tonight to speak, which is really wonderful in many ways because it demonstrates that we can do this online and have people come and, and give comments. So I'm really happy about that. At the same time, I want to make use of our time really well because we do have some really important regular agenda items to vote on tonight. So I would like to make a suggestion, two suggestions, and it's up to you to decide, that we would limit it to an hour and that we would ask only Inglewood residents to speak first. And then if we have more time in that hour, we can check in with each other at 60 minutes. And if there's more time for non-Inglewood residents to speak, we could. Because I think there are some folks that don't live in the city, but I, I'm not, we're not, I think the clerk was checking on it. And then if it's over, if we have a, a number more to go, to add those to the end of the meeting. If you want to go longer at an hour and still take more, we could do that as well. But I'd like to at least have a check-in at an hour. The second thing would be that no one cedes their time. We have had that policy in the past and I've heard some information coming in that maybe some people are planning, and they signed up for five minutes, but are planning to give their time to someone else. But that's not something we do. So with those two things, I'd like to ask if, if you're in favor of those or you want to propose something else. Member Stone.
I, I agree with you. I am not in, in favor of folks ceding their time to other members or other speakers. I'm fine with preferencing Inglewood residents to speak first because those are the folks that we are directly responsible to. I do want to make sure that everybody who signed up to speak gets heard though. I believe that it's important for us to, to hear everybody. Um, I believe that it's important for us to, to hear everybody.
Would you be okay with putting those at the end of the meeting before council member's choice, like we used to do? We have done that in the past.
I mean, I don't, I don't see how it really makes much of a difference to put it at the end. I think that we just do it all at once, um, because it's all on the same topic, from what I can tell.
I didn't give the reason for that. It would mean that our staff don't have to stay as late.
Oh.
And so we could actually use their time. They're getting paid and have to take extra, you know, time, so it would be just putting it towards the end.
That's an interesting argument. I actually, I, I actually would be in favor of that, based on that argument, yes.
All right, Member, or Mayor Protem?
Um, well, I was in favor for the hour when we previously spoke about it about a month ago, so I would be in favor of that. Um, when we talk about Inglewood citizens, are we talking about Inglewood proper or just Inglewood's a vast amount of land? I don't know if we, there's a way for us to figure that out, but, and then, um, I think it's true that...
Live in a district, District One, Two, Three, or Four, that all they live in a district.
And then I guess in terms of seeding, uh, well, that's, I, I don't think we allow that anyway, so I think, yeah, just keep going with that, so, uh, I'd be in favor of all of that.
All right, Member Russell?
I am in favor of just going through the list the way they signed up. Um, I am also in favor of just going through it right now at the beginning and not stopping in the middle. We have gone weeks on end with no one speaking out, and so I believe this is an opportunity for the citizens to speak, and I think that we should let them. Thank you.
Uh, whether they're Inglewood or not, you don't care.
I don't care.
Okay, Member Anderson?
I, uh, I support all the, all your suggestions, Mayor, thank you.
All right, uh, Member Wink and Member Questa, can you weigh in?
Member Wink?
Thank you, Dave. Um, I don't know, I, I, I suggested, uh, well, we discussed all of this a, a little while back in terms of public comment. Um, I'll do whatever the majority was, so I don't get, uh, suggesting something that might be productive.
No, we did, we, we didn't make a decision on some of this. We did say we'd check in at one, at one hour, but we didn't put it in the policy. Member Questa?
I do feel that the seeding is, yeah, it's obviously not our policy stuff, thanks for that.
Right, I, okay, Member Questa?
I'd rather just go through the list as it stands and, and however long it takes us. However, one more caveat I would like to add, if we do decide to go with seeding, um, I would hope that we include business owners from Inglewood as well, along with residents, uh, because I think that they should stand on that same footing with, with citizens and getting a, a prioritization in speaking, i- if that's the route that council prefers to go.
I think a month ago, we did decide we wouldn't let, we wouldn't have people cede, and I just wanted to make sure that was clear, so it sounds like...
Not on seeding, just in terms of prioritizing speakers, if you're a resident or not.
Oh, I see what you mean.
I would like to see business owners.
Sorry.
I misspoke there, pardon me.
Well, it's okay, I, I understand now what you meant. All right, well, then, um, I'm going to read the little, uh, piece here. The deadline to sign up to speak for scheduled public comment is Wednesday by 5:00 PM prior to the meeting through the city clerk's office. This is an opportunity for the public to address city council, and there is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, and council, I really encourage you to just ask clarifying questions, not try and enter into discussion tonight, but there will be no dialogue. Please limit your presentation to five minutes, uh, those who, uh, scheduled for this time, and written materials for presentation may be submitted to the city clerk and can be presented to us. And tonight, we have our first time where we're doing actually online video. Um, our first person up tonight is Mr. Jake Gilbert, and please state your residency and, uh, the topic tonight is regarding off-leash that you signed up for. Not that you can't say more about other things. And the city clerk will be timing tonight and give you a one-minute warning, so that you know when you hit four minutes and that you have one minute left.
Okay, great. Um, so yeah, I'm glad to hear so much support for, uh, fencing. I wrote the following before the study session, um, so here it is. Uh, last month, after the Inglewood Parks and Rec Commission called for eliminating off-leash privileges at three Inglewood parks, Inglewood Unleashed put a petition together and got five-hundred-and-thirty-three signatures. As I learned through an open records request, and as council knows by now, eighty-five percent of the signatures on that petition belonged to people who don't live in Inglewood. A similar petition with over a thousand signatures was eighty-three percent, non-Inglewood residents. Much larger numbers of signers came from Denver, Littleton, and other nearby cities. All these petitions do is strongly suggest that a large majority of people using Inglewood's off-leash parks are not Inglewood residents. The city's own sixty-nine response survey was simply shared on social media, and respondents were self-selected with no verification of Inglewood residency. It's not statistically sound. As I said at council's previous meeting, it's not Inglewood's job to meet other cities' demands for services. While off-leash has a place in our parks, we have converted our best parks into spaces many Inglewood residents are afraid to go, mostly for the benefit of people outside Inglewood. Some Inglewood residents have resorted to carrying pepper spray to protect their families and, and their leash dogs from unruly off-leash dogs. And in fact, our off-leash parks are such a free-for-all that even some Inglewood residents who want off-leash space avoid the parks. I spoke to an Inglewood woman who told me she has to take her Shih Tzu all the way to Aurora to find an off-leash park that keeps small dogs safe. The Off-Leash Study Session Packet lists dozens of incidents involving off-leash dogs, and Dave Lewis, the chief code enforcement officer, recently said, quote, "Most of the safety concerns are not being reported." While I support the Parks and Rec Commission's recommendations, I think fully enclosed off-leash areas at existing parks, off-leash parks like Jason, with separate sections for small dogs to keep them safe, is a compromise worth considering. Inglewood Unleashed says that small, or says that off-leash parks provide a sense of community. I am wholly sympathetic to this, and fenced off-leash areas would not interfere with the off-leash community's ability to socialize at all. In fact, the current off-leash situation suppresses the formation of other potential communities, sports groups, parents, and other groups of people who avoid our parks because of constant unpleasant encounters with strange dogs. Also, fenced enclosures for dogs would allow the off-leash community to get together at all hours of the day. Inglewood Unleashed also suggested licensing dogs to make up for lost revenue. Licensing is fine, but a myopic focus on revenue misses the point. The point is that many Inglewood citizens are deciding our parks are not amenable to youth sports, they're not amenable to birthday parties, basketball games, picnics, they're amenable to off-leash dogs, and that's about it. And Rangers are a great idea, but if that doesn't come with fully enclosing the off-leash areas, it's cold comfort to know that if my dog or my child is a victim of a dog bite, a ticket will be issued. These incidents happen in a heartbeat. I want to emphasize that tinkering with the off-leash hours is not the answer, because the time restrictions have not worked. They're unenforceable and they're largely ignored, and even if they did work, off-leash users would still get prime hours. Inglewood Unleashed is about to tell you that sharing the parks by fully fencing off-leash areas is intolerable. Their communications routinely use the language of conquest, referring to mothers, grandmothers, and dog walkers who have had scary encounters with out-of-control dogs as, quote, "the opposition", and saying things like, "We've won the battle, now let's go win the war." Who exactly are they at war with? Why are they so resistant to finding middle ground with their neighbors? In fact, while Inglewood Unleashed has said that fencing dogs would be unacceptable, they've simultaneously suggested fencing Inglewood's children. Please do not fence the playgrounds. The bizarre spectacle of confined children surrounded by free-range dogs will send an unequivocal message that Inglewood is no place for families, and it will do nothing to solve the off-leash dog problems experienced by sports groups, picnic groups, and people who walk dogs, leash dogs that are old, vulnerable, or a little introverted. Some speakers will tell you tonight that people like me should avoid these parks, but these were always intended to be and once were multi-use parks. Domination by off-leash users is not the vision that was sold to Inglewood years ago when this unusual experiment began. We were told we'd be able to share the parks, and we can share the parks with fully fenced off-leash areas with separate small dog sections. Remember that off-leash, unfenced off-leash areas are highly unusual anywhere in the country, much less four such areas in a city of thirty-five thousand people. Fencing the off-leash areas is not a radical proposition. Our current situation is what's radical. Please make a responsible decision and do not simply cave to the loudest, most demanding, most uncompromising voices. Please give some consideration to the Inglewood citizens who have quietly given up on the parks and have no organized lobbying group to speak for them. They matter, too. Let's share the parks. And with the last few seconds I have, I just want to add, one line of fencing in Jason Park will not work, because rule breakers rely on being able to play dumb, and they either won't know which side they're supposed to be on, or they'll pretend not to know. So fenced areas really should be fully enclosed to eliminate the conflict, and that's what I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see no questions from council, so we'll move on to...
Thank you.
The second one, thank you for coming. Uh, Povie and Ross Finning, uh, and I'd let, I'd let, I let, uh, Jake Gilbert get by without saying where he lived, but I, we know he's in one of the districts, um, but please state what district at least that you're in, and, uh, we know that this is about off-leash dog privileges at Jason Duncan and Centennial that you're speaking on tonight.
Hi, yes, um, we are in District Four, uh, Member Questa's district.
Thank you.
Um, so similar to Jake, I have a prepared statement, um, and then I'd like to offer some comments afterward, if that's okay. Um, so thank you so much again for, um, hosting this study session and, um, giving such priority to this topic. I think, um, based on the amount of citizen engagement, this is just incredibly important. I really appreciate that. Um, so we're here again to speak as President and Vice President of Inglewood Unleashed, um, on behalf of all the Inglewood residents who love taking their dogs to play off-leash at Jason Duncan and Centennial Parks. Um, again, we really feel strongly that the recommendations put forth by the Off-Leash Subcommittee that were discussed in your study session earlier this evening are simply not representative of, um, the needs and desires of the stakeholders that were polled in their own, um, in their own work over the last two years. And, um, frankly, with all due respect, the data that has been published also does not support a lot of those recommendations. Um, and, uh, given that we commented on this at our last statement, I won't belabor that point any further here. Um, and as you all have heard in the countless emails sent to you in the last few weeks, and that you'll hear in the public comments tonight, um, the off-leash privileges at, uh, these parks of concern, they've provided many Inglewood citizens not only the safe place to allow their dogs to play, but also a community and a sense of place, and something that, um, this is, that theme is referenced in the Inglewood Citizen, I think, every time I read it. Um, if Inglewood really wants to foster a sense of place, removing off-leash parks, off-leash privileges at these parks really just works against that mission and, um, makes me wonder where these recommendations, how these recommendations play into that. Um, and I think I, it's also worth pointing out that the conflict over the off-leash privileges is not a dog people versus parents' families problem, and I think Ross and I can officially say that now, as I'm nursing our newborn six-day-old.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, we are, um, she came a week early, um, so forgive me. Um, she, I, I think that it's really important to recognize that there's a large cohort of families and parents who have both dogs and children, as you all have, have also acknowledged in this meeting, that enjoy these parks for the specific reason that they are able to take their children to the playground. One parent goes over with the kids, one parent goes with the dog, knocks tiring both parties out at the same time, and gets to go home and sleep soundly. Um, I think that it's really important to remember that sixteen parks in Inglewood have multi-use spaces, only four have off-leash privileges for very specific hours. Um, and I think that that's just something that keeps getting missed in a lot of this discussion, that we have so many parks in this city, and we're, we're arguing about three of them right now, and it just seems a little bit, um, as Member Russell said, a little bit blindsiding to all of us who enjoy these parks and honestly haven't witnessed a lot of incidents, particularly at Duncan Park. Um, but regardless of all of this, Um, Inglewood Unleashed is absolutely willing to work with, um, the, um, all parties involved, all stakeholders, to try and figure out a better option, because as a parent, as a new parent, I understand the hesitation of parents to take their children to some parks and playgrounds where dogs may be running around. I would like to offer that there are a lot of parks where those parents, if they are particularly concerned about the dogs, could take their children. Rotolo Park, for example, has a really nice natural barrier. Um, there's a really nice natural irrigation system barrier where the playground sits much higher than the multi-use field. That is an easy place for parents to take their kids if they're particularly concerned about interactions with dogs, and that might be something that the Parks and Rec Off-Leash Subcommittee may consider for a new off-leash park south of Hamden, given...
One minute left, just real quick.
Sorry?
One minute left.
One minute left. And then, and, um, again, I just really thank all of you for taking this time to consider all of this. I kind of mashed my statement as well as the rebuttal to some of the things that were discussed. Um, please feel free to ask any questions, but the one last, the one last, um, point that I would like to make, I would like to advocate for data-supported solutions. Currently, it really does feel like a lot of the recommendations are not supported by the data published. Um, I'm a data fiend, I'm a physician, and that's kind of how I function, and I have looked at this up and down, and it just really doesn't seem to, um, mesh from point A to point Z. Um, and I would really love, as Inglewood Unleashed leadership, to, to, to maybe come up with a more validated survey, um, to, before we start really considering these solutions. And then the last point on fencing, Canine Corral, I think everyone who has been there and had a bad experience will tell you, it is not a fun park to take your dog. Um, if your dog is a well-trained dog and interacts well with others, every time we have taken our gold... Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, and congratulations again, thanks for being here tonight, appreciate it. Next, I don't see any questions. Uh, so next is Kelly Kane. Uh, Kelly, please state your area of residence. Here to speak about off-leash parks again. Kelly, are you on still? I don't see her or him, sorry if I've...
On.
Oh, there you are.
Okay, sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. As stated, my name is Kelly Kane, and I've lived in Inglewood District Three since late 2011. For the past two years, my husband and I have taken our dog Daisy to the Inglewood Canine Corral, Jake Duncan, and Jason Parks. Our preferred park is Jason. It's clean, grassy, open spaces, mostly fenced-in area, and convenient and safe parking lot, were the initial reasons why we started taking Daisy, Daisy there during the prescribed off-leash hours. What we weren't expecting were the friends that we would make and the puppy pals Daisy has made. We formed connections, friendships, and pride in our community and in our favorite park. We visit Jason twice a day, and while there, we have never once witnessed any type of negative interaction between dogs, their owners, and other park users. I consistently see dog owners keeping their dogs under control and cleaning up their dogs' waste. In fact, the city's own data supports this. In a slide deck dated March twenty-third, 2020, shared with me by Councilmember Russell, it shows the combined total of summons and warnings at Inglewood's off-leash and fenced-in dog parks was a hundred and eight for 2019. In the time period between January twenty and March twenty, there was a total of one warning and no summons. Despite going into a safer-at-home order, the initial part of 2020 shows that the city's own social media and mail messaging to educate the public on the off-leash and fenced-in park, dog park rules was and is working. In fact, most problems were parked with no off-leash designation. This focused citywide messaging effort continues to work to this day. With summer and safer-at-home orders, more people are making greater use of all of Inglewood's parks, including our off-leash options. Our own family has visited Jason more frequently, and the norm is the same. I still see many, many responsible owners with no negative interactions between dogs, their owners, and other users of the park. At this time, I would like to present the results of our Keep Jason Park Off-Leash petition from change.org. To date, we have collected one thousand ninety-five signatures. Fifty-one percent of that number are Colorado residents, and it's that fifty-one percent of signers that I want to look at more closely. Keep in mind that some of the Inglewood zip codes came up as Centennial, Sheridan, Littleton, and Cherry Hills Village, when they should have come up as Inglewood. Because of this, Inglewood is likely being underrepresented in the numbers to follow. So we had a total of five-hundred-and-fifty-four in-state supporters to keep Jason Park off-leash. Of that five-hundred-and-fifty-four, two-hundred-five, or thirty-seven percent of signers were from Inglewood. Eighty-two, or fifteen percent, were from Littleton, Centennial, Highlands Ranch, Cherry Hills Village, Lone Tree, and other nearby areas. And two-hundred-and-twenty-one, or forty percent, were from Denver. So that's quite a few from Inglewood and Denver combined, seventy-seven percent. Why so many from Denver? Well, just as many of us who live in Inglewood visit Wash Park, City Park, and other Denver parks, we are finding our neighbors to the north are doing the same. They come and frequent our off-leash parks, then enjoy a brew at Barnhouse Tap, or McMullin's Irish Pub, and maybe a bite to eat at Mo's Barbecue, or Frank the Pizza King. We need to continue to value their patronage to our local businesses and make our off-leash parks as welcoming to them as they have for us. According to the City of Inglewood website, we have sixteen parks and recreational facilities, not including the corral. Of those sixteen, four are designated off-leash parks. Only twenty-five percent of Inglewood's parks are accessible for off-leash privileges with certain designated hours. In other words, the majority of Inglewood's parks, seventy-five percent, have no off-leash option. Clearly, options for families and groups wishing to avoid dogs far outnumber the off-leash options. If we add in playgrounds at Inglewood's four public elementary schools, there are even more choices for families and children to avoid playgrounds with dogs nearby.
One minute left.
One minute left.
But Inglewood's dog owners have fewer parks for their dogs. In light of Jason Park's responsible dog owners, the city's own data showing a significant decline in summons and warnings, plus the recreational and park options available to users of all types, it makes no sense to remove any of the park's off-leash status. What does make sense is to continue with the city's positive messaging program regarding park rules for all users. What you are already doing is working and serving to make Inglewood parks a positive experience for the vast majority of its diverse users. Further, I urge city council members to vote against the proposed restructuring of off-leash, off-leash privileges at these parks in Inglewood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kelly. I don't see anybody else with their hand up. I just wanted to clarify, though, that we're not voting anything tonight, just to make sure for those who are speaking. Uh, next up is Mr. Robert Taylor, here to speak about off-leash. Please state the area of Inglewood, if you're a resident.
Uh, we have lived about a block from Jason Park for about forty-five years now. Uh, we're about a block from Rotolo Park, too. We go twice a day on average with our dog, now, used to be two until about two weeks ago. Uh, we generally use the park as a good reason to get a little bit of exercise for ourselves and the dogs. And we have uh, had observed the same things that Kelly was talking about over all these years. We have never, I have never seen uh, anything that amounted to a, an attack situation. There have been so, a couple of times in past years where a, a dog was more aggressive to other dogs, but it was always brought into control by the, by the owner. There was one incident where a lady brought a dog that was uh, kind of a pit bull mentality, and that dog was uh, never seen again after we, as a group, sort of surrounded her and, in effect, urged her out of the park. Uh, as far as cleaning up goes, we generally pick up two or three uh, little evidences uh, after every time we walk around, maybe one for our dog and two or three for others. And the end result is uh, a park that is, like Kelly said, kept surprisingly clean. Uh, whenever we walk anywhere in the vicinity of where the playground is, what always happens is the kids come out to want to pet our dog, which is kind of human nature. And so, that's why we're concerned about, uh, it, it's not that we couldn't live with a, with a lea, an on-leash situation, but it would be difficult, as uh, John Stone said, to make, make those things uh, uh, fit within our normal daytime hours. Both my wife and I are now retired. And so, we generally tend to go around nine or so in the morning and around seven or eight or so at night. Now, it seems like those are the hours that would not, we'd be excluded uh, from the park. So it would be a, a difficult thing to, to function that way. And uh, for those reasons, we basically urge that the, the council maintain uh, relatively free access to what amounts to one of the few places where dog owners can actually chuck a ball more than fifty feet at a time, not have to worry about waiting around and dodging where a lot of evidence might be left in a restrained park that is a small one, like uh, the park that's down on, that is just south of us. We have gone to that uh, enclosed off-leash park once, years ago. Uh, primarily avoided it since then because of the constrained feeling and the the, the, the feeling, the, the dog was not, was not happy with being there either. The dogs are all kind of crammed in. It's like, they, they deal with each other because they have to. Uh, in Jason Park, they work with each other because they're friends. It's amazing, they, the dogs socialize just like we people do. And uh, we found that uh, walking around that large field, field in Jason Park, uh, one time around, plus the walk to and from our, our house, that's about a part of a mile. It's a good walk. It's a good walk for the dogs. And that's what happens with, with the, the people with the, that we socialize with in the morning. It's not organized, it's just kind of a rite. So we, I thank you again for all, for letting this uh, come up and be discussed and, and revealed. I, I learned a lot tonight from uh, from Joe Anderson and, and, and the, the park rangers that, talking about the, the laws in this. But it's, it's really a, a, a nice thing, the way things have been, and again, we've been around here since before there was any o- off-leash problem. Remember the two thousand and three thing? Before that, we've been here thirty years before that, and the park was never a problem then either. So, the kids like it, don't worry about dog, I, you know, regard, let, let the owners maintain uh, their dogs the way they have in the past, and let's keep it that way in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I don't see anybody wanting to ask a question. Appreciate your coming tonight. Next is Ms. Ellen Hertzman. Please state your name and what area of Inglewood you live in.
I don't believe Ms. Hertzman is here.
Okay. Next is Raphael Duchaine. I don't see her name either. Do you see her at all, Jade?
I don't. I'm actually looking, um, I believe Ann may be the next person that I see. Um, but I'm just double-scanning for the next upcoming.
Yeah, I, the next one on my list is Tim Huey. So, do I, am I out of sync with someone?
No, ma'am. I believe Tim Huey and Josh Woodworth are also not on.
Okay.
Would be the next person.
Okay. Oh, I see. It's the other side. Okay. Anne Bitka, please state your name and whether or not you live in Inglewood.
Hi there. Yes, this is Anne Bitka. My husband and I live in District Four.
Thank you, welcome.
Thanks. And thanks for the chance to comment publicly on, on what my husband and I feel is an important issue. Um, we've been going to Jason Park for a little over a year and a half with our dog Rooney. Um, when we actually started going to the dog park, we were new to Inglewood and actually to Colorado. We were hoping a dog would be a good way to meet people in the community, but actually, as Kelly said, we really never expected that um, our, going to the Jason Park would actually be one of our favorite parts about living here. We have met so many friends, human friends, through Jason Park, but also our dog has had a, had a chance to meet, you know, his, his dog friends as well. Um, it's been, it's been a really lovely part about living here, and in fact, one of the reasons why uh, we would like to continue living in Inglewood over the long term. Uh, we weren't sure if this was going to be the area that we ended up for, um, for, for much um, you know, for the long term or the medium term, but actually Jason Park has been a really great part of living here. Um, there's a great community. I think everyone's here. Um, the people that go to Jason Park often are, you know, very committed to keeping the park a good environment for everyone. Um, as the previous person talked about, a lot of people at the park, you know, there's a lot of kind of self-policing. The community wants to keep it a good place for dogs and for humans, and so whether it's, you know, stumbling upon, you know, a, a, you know, a waste or something, people are prone to pick it up for other people. Um, in our experience, we've actually never encountered either aggressive people or aggressive dogs, and we go almost every day um, after six o'clock. And like I said, it's just, it's just been a really great part of living in this community. One thing I just wanted to respond to in terms of the discussion from earlier, which is very interesting, something we learned.
Breaking now just a little bit, Ann, if you could get closer to the mic, maybe.
Sure. Yeah, how's this?
Yep.
Great. You know, one thing I wanted to comment on from earlier is that this idea of, you know, the constituents in Inglewood being dog owners versus being, you know, members of a family or having children. We have our dog. We're also expecting our first child to speak in that. And so I think there's this recognition that we want to have these places that are, um, open to families and dogs, and you can be both. Um, and there's not, and you, you know, we want to keep these places safe for children, but I think there's a lot of children that also have dogs, and so I think that's a really great example of what Jason Park can offer, is a place where families can go with their dog and also to, you know, um, but also have that space for kids. You know, I'm open to, you know, separating those places off, the, the playground from the, from the open space, but I think there's something really special about having, having a place that can cater to both sets of constituents. Um, so I would recommend that, you know, thinking about these other solutions, and not drastically cutting off off-leash privileges, but also, you know, looking at the data and thinking about what are some middle ground, um, you know, middle roads for, for, for us to find going forward. Um, so with that, I'll just wrap it up there and say thanks for your consideration.
Thank you very much for coming, Ms. Bitka. And congratulations on starting a family. Next up is uh, Mr. Ryan Woodruff, although I think you might be showing up as Ryan Woods on here. I'm not sure if they're the same person or.
I don't believe Josh Woodworth is on, or Ryan Woodruff is on. Jessica Simons is.
Okay, next with Jessica Simons.
Hello, uh, city council members. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak today. I am from District One. I have lived in District One for most of the last twenty-five years. I've raised two children in the area, and I have had two dogs, uh, sequential in the area. Um, I have come to this city council recently requesting that there was a dog park on the north end of town. Um, I'm delighted to see that that has been considered, and thank you for that consideration. Uh, that said, I do have some reservations about caging in the dogs in those small areas that have been listed, uh, predominantly based on some of the things that have already been mentioned. Uh, case in point, everyone has mentioned that the off-leash dog park that is fully enclosed at this point doesn't have any grass. Uh, this is a natural consequence when you have many dogs in a small place. Since these two new parks would be on the north side where they're likely to get more youth, and they're going to be significantly smaller as far as square footage than the area available currently, I strongly suspect that these areas are going to end up being dirt and messy and very difficult for dogs and people to enjoy. Um, the recommendation itself seems like it might be more created to cause more problems than it's worth. Again, because you are putting more dogs in a smaller space, you are, in effect, making it harder for dogs to behave properly. Um, one thing that hasn't been mentioned that I thought should be brought up this evening is that licensing that has been very much recommended by the group today can be used a little bit differently to solve a few extra problems. Licensing doesn't just have to be pay a fee and get your dog into the park. We could potentially, as a community, set up some kind of behavior test associated with that, just to make sure that the dogs are meeting the needs of the full community. I can't speak for everyone here, but I don't want my dog to be the one that is causing anyone in that park any kind of nervous or scared. I want everyone to feel comfortable in that park. I have taken the time with my dog to make sure that that's going to be the case. There are many, many other people on this call this evening that feel the same way and will do whatever it takes to make sure that everyone feels comfortable. And if it means that the dogs are given some kind of behavior test in order to be allowed in these parks off-leash, so be it. We will make that happen, just so that everyone feels comfortable. Um, again, thank you very much for considering our needs, and thank you for having us on this call this evening.
Thank you for coming. Uh, next up is Cindy, is it Gilbert?
Cindy is not present.
Albert, okay. And while I'm going on to the next, I want to remind everybody that might be on still, that we have a policing town hall on Wednesday night. I hope you all come to that as well. Next I, next person is Patrick and Christine Mashka. I think I see a picture at least.
Hi, are we able to put our video on?
You sure can. You're supposed to be able to.
Okay, there we go.
All I see is your picture, Patrick, but.
I gotta, I just have to click the button.
Uh, it's fine to go ahead if you'd like.
Hi, everybody.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm Patrick Mashka. This is my wife, Christine. Um, I'm a thirty-year resident of Inglewood and a homeowner for twenty-five years in Inglewood. We live in District Three, and our comments are limited to Duncan Park, which is close to our home. Um, first of all, I just really appreciate all the balanced views that have been presented by the council tonight. I've been on since you first started. And just, I really hear a good understanding that this is a complex problem, that there's not an easy solution. Um, on the other hand, I, I thought that the recommendations from the Parks and Rec Department were pretty weak. And, and not supported by data. Um, and I, I hope you'll consider that we really need, we need to study this issue and have data to make decisions. Otherwise, we're just making decisions based on fear or opinions, and we all know there's a lot of opinions out there. So first off, um, when um, the presenter showed the overview of Duncan Park, she, she honed in on the area that's field as that's, that, that field area is um, the, the only area for dogs. When, when actually the whole perimeter of Duncan Park is really kind of designed for someone to walk around. When we take our dog to Duncan Park, um, he stays close to us off-leash. So it's, 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 there's more area for off-leash at Duncan Park than what was represented by Parks and Rec Department, is my point there. Um, I'm there early every morning, so uh, Mr. Stone, I'm with you on being an early riser. There is nobody at the park between five and seven AM, so um, sometimes I run into one other person, so I, I think that just points to, you know, finding the right time for us to have off-leash, off-le, off-leash privileges. Um, so I hope you'll study that and consider it. Hearing that people will do what they want, um, whether or not there's rules, I just consider that a pretty weak argument for eliminating privileges. I mean, if, if we're gonna go that direction, why are the parks designated at all for off-leash if people are just gonna do what they want? So, again, I think that just points to a need for enforcement, um, which many of you have already mentioned, and I appreciate that. We need to know the number of complaints, an actual number, and we also need to know what was the percentage of increase. That's the kind of data that the council needs to make a decision like this. I was disappointed to hear that the presenter said that she made one visit to Duncan Park. Um, I'm sorry to say that's not representative. Um, I'm there every day, usually more than once, as, as is my wife. Um, so again, we, we need more comprehensive data, not just somebody's snapshot of what might have happened on their one visit. Has there been any incident that's happened with children? I didn't hear that there was an incident. Um, and playing the what-if game is not gonna help. It's not data-based. Um, people can be hurt by dogs that are on a leash through fences in, in a variety of contexts. So I'm just asking you to consider that also. I, I believe in general that residents don't want to drive their dog to an off-leash park, so having a neighborhood, neighborhood park is what's important to us. Um, I want to walk there, and I do. It's about four blocks away. Um, so solutions, I, first of all, I think we need to keep in mind that off-leash is not for every dog and for every owner. Um, I think what, from what I heard on the council, is that you recognize that. Um, I support the licensing idea, um, or registering the dog somehow to keep track of who's, who's doing this. I am not in favor of an enclosed area for dogs at Duncan Park. Um, it's a beautiful park, and I don't, I don't see a, an effective way to do that, um, that's aesthetically pleasing. I think dog owners need to be educated and they need to be held accountable. Again, just to point to enforcement on that. Um, I think you should consider changing the hours, collect data, determine the best times. That's more fair than eliminating privileges entirely.
A minute left.
Better signage is needed. You need to post the hours and expectations prominently with warnings. Uh, signage is important for the dog owners and the patrons who want to avoid the park. And yes, sometimes it's a good idea to avoid the park. I, I suggest maybe a simple, low aesthetic barrier around the playground, not a fence, but just something that says, this is, this area is for kids. Maybe it's a gate. Um, then if there's a dog, a dog in there, it's kind of obvious. Um, I support the park ranger idea. Um, again, I think we need more data. Thank you all for your patience and your understanding. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you very much for coming. And come Wednesday night to the town hall. The next is Anna Varela. I think she's on. Ms. Varela, I see your hand up. Um, can you unmute?
Okay, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Well, thank you so much, everybody. First of all, I actually just moved right next to Bates Logan Park in September.
Sorry, Mayor. Oh, there it goes.
Oh, so, so sorry. Can everyone hear me okay now?
Yes. Yep, go ahead.
Awesome. I just moved here in September and I live right next to, I'm looking at Bates Logan Park right now. So I want to say thank you so much for doing this. This is something really important to me. And I also can tell you guys that from being a resident outside of Englewood, I love what everyone is doing as a community. And on that note, I do want to say, not enough credit is being given to that policing that the gentleman was speaking about before, that self kind of community policing of dog owners. I know it's not quantitative, but I think that we don't have enough data and that's totally true. And I think that an example for Jason Park, which a lot of my, my local friends and I do have to go to, to allow our dogs to walk around and run around and socialize with other dogs and yes, with other dog families. I think that allowing for that has just given me, you know, so much more faith in that off-leash kind of community, even if it is for now, just so that we can start getting the kind of data that you guys are all looking for, right? So be that saying, hey, you guys have been respecting these hours or there haven't been complaints, let's open it up again and let's, you know, continue policing each other. I think it is, I know there's not a lot of talk about that, but it is something very simple that I think could add to that kind of community sense as well as making moves quickly and getting the numbers we need. And then just something on the side, if I may, I think it's really fair to say what's important for people in Englewood, but I also want to, want to jump on board. You know, other, other cities have other great parks and it's wonderful to visit those. It's great to get to know other neighborhoods. And I think we have to be really careful about when we talk about what we want for our residents and our citizens, that we also keep in mind that we are part of the bigger collective of Denver, of Colorado, you know, and, and just of a community as, as a whole. So if we could be open-minded to the people that yes, may join our parks, but may also be future residents, right? So that may be people like the family that we just spoke to that ended up loving and staying in Englewood because it was an incredible community that was open to them. So if we could just be a little more careful about that and about what we prioritize as a, as a community and you all as a city council, I would really appreciate that. And in the meantime, you know, give us a chance to show you with data that we can be responsible dog owners regardless of the local park. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Varela, for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Next person is Mr. Steve Kelly, also here to speak about off-leash. State your, state your name and where you live.
Hello, Steve Kelly. I live in District Three. Hi, Joe Anderson. I live on Dexter Street. No, I live on Delaware Street. I grew up on Dexter Street. Hello, city council members. You know who I am. I've owned a property in Englewood since my youngest daughter was born, so 27 years. I'm speaking about off-leash parks. I go to Jason Park and I volunteered to be a, one of the ambassadors for Jason Park. There was a great birthday party there last night. Pinata, everybody having fun. I did not see any dog encounters. Just a couple of things. Emerson Park, I was there with my kids playing soccer. I think it's really small. It's going to get overcrowded if the lower-tier parks are closed to off-leash. And I think the, the residents that are up there are going to have a big discovery. Dave Lee, he did make that comment that it's challenging for Jason Park in the winter months, the non-growing season. If the park hours were just kept consistent all year long, 6:00 to 11:00, 6:00 to 11:00, that would give the winter, you know, the winter months some extra time with not having traffic on. I read the subcommittee's report. I think there was five people on the committee. One dropped out, one got on, and the appendancy, the appendices, the report included many recommendations. And then it seemed that the final recommendation came out months later and it did not flow at all, in my opinion, with the recommendations in the report. I don't know if any, it struck anyone else that way. It seemed to be non-congruent, the final recommendation with the entire report. So I would say the, the report is a bit flawed. Great effort. You know, a lot of stuff did come out, but I just don't see the flow to the final conclusion. Take Emerson Park, for example. As I review the code enforcement cases for off-leash parks, I see no need to shut down Jason Park's off-leash privileges. I think there were four cases last year, one case so far this year. And how many kids have been victims of attacks in the last 17 years? And based on what I heard here, I'm going to have to say zero because I did not hear anybody say that there was one. So again, as, as one of the other speakers said, you know, there's a lot of maybes, this coulda, but I believe there has been zero of those incidences, which is a wonderful thing. Based on the numbers, shutting off the off-leash parks everywhere south of 285 would be equivalent to throwing the baby out with the bathwater. And I also think, I don't know, but I think the population center for the city, you know, geographically and population-wise is probably south of 285. So it makes no sense to eliminate off-leash privileges for all the parks down there and then make everybody drive, you know, drive up north to crowd those parks. Off-leash parks has been a great thing for many years. We don't need to conform to other cities' codes like a lot of cities do. Let's stand out as a city and, and be proud that we have a little bit of uniqueness. I know I heard today there is, there are off-leash parks in Denver, but... The subcommittee report did identify concerns. I'm not going to list them. You've seen them. Let's all work together to make this program even better for the next 17 years. The recommendations report mentions education. Well, let's work to educate and monitor how that affects the concern areas. I'm all for improvement and as a retired teacher, I'm all for education too. Based on the citation to warning ratio, the city could generate revenue by eliminating warnings. In this COVID area, era, I am sure the city is going to be pressed for funds. I read a complaint letter that stated at 5:30 p.m., the park was full of off-leashers. Well, cite them. And what I heard tonight was they were all, you know, non-Englewood residents, maybe. Well, okay, cite them. Code enforcement could get some flexibility in their schedule to show up at, at 5:00 o'clock. Otherwise, make the off-leash park start at 5:00 and then you'll have no violators, you know, but get creative with it. This issue needs more study. In terms of recommendations for a fence, I personally think that a fence that separates the north and south side of Jason Park would effectively create a barrier between the playground, the picnic area, the basketball court, and maybe have that grassy area be for little dogs and then big dogs or, and any dog is good on the north side. As far as quality goes, I like the, I think the park looks beautiful right now. $2,500 in seeds has worked great. There's some fungus rings in the middle of the field. It's not dogs.
I apologize. The time is up. I did not give you a warning. I apologize for that.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for coming tonight. You have some great ideas.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next is Mr. John Lieberman.
Good evening.
Please state your name and where you reside. John, we could hear you and now we're not.
One second, Mayor. I think we might have clicked the wrong button.
Easy to happen.
There it is.
John, are you there?
There we go.
There, I can hear you now.
Yeah, can you hear me now? There we go. Okay, good. Okay, I'm John Lieberman. I live in District Three. I've been a homeowner in Englewood for 27 years. I've been going to the dog parks, primarily Jason, Centennial, and Duncan for about 10 years. And it's been my experience that Englewood is a very dog-friendly community based on the number of people that I see at the parks, based on the people, the number of people I see walk past my house walking their dogs. Sometimes when I walk my dog, I walk down an alley. And even on one block, if you don't get eight or 10 dogs on those properties, you know, letting you know that they're there, that would be unusual. So there's a lot of dogs in this town and this is a constituency, taxpayers and voters that deserve off-leash availability. The whole saying that this has come up at this time is, it strikes me as odd because the parks have been shuttered to all the records. The only people that have been using these parks, at least Jason, and Jason primarily because there are the soccer fields and whatnot, have been dog owners. So if you take the dog owners out, it's, it's going to be empty. The land won't even be used. Contrary to Mr. Gilbert's remarks, I believe there should be a fence around the playground at Jason Park with picnic tables and grass inside the fence. Per the Colorado Bureau of Investigation, there are seven sexual predators between Santa Fe and Broadway and Hampton and Bellevue. So in the interest of safety for those children, I think you ought to have a fence around it, not to mention, you know, the element from the Holiday Motel and the Lucky You. In the same sense, the Englewood Police Department sets up radar locations to ensure public safety, issuing tickets and fines. I think similar attention should be paid to off-leash parks to ensure public safety, to ensure public safety and adherence to the rules. Englewood Unleashed proposal to implement a license program with a fee will not only generate revenue, but it'll also separate those that are responsible owners from those that aren't. Anyone that really is committed to taking their dog to that park and following the rules will pay the fee without a question. Those that, that are just, you know, one, come and go, you know, occasionally, don't really value the amenities, won't pay, won't pay the registration fee. As for K-9 Corral, it's been my observation that people go there, sit at a table, and let their dog run free. You know, pooping all over the place, you know, drinking a beer or whatever. A suggestion to clean up K-9 Corral, take out the park benches. It might be uncomfortable for those people, but it's going to become less of a hangout for the humans. They're going to sit there at the park benches, have a beer and a cigarette, and then an hour later, you know, gather up their dogs and take off. Joe Anderson said that it is inevitable that an incident will occur at some point. Dave Lewis said there have been no reports in the many years of off-leash privileges. At the last city council meeting, it was evident that the anti-off-leash people are a pretty vocal populace. If there were any problems, I'm sure they would have reported it if a child had been bit or if anything serious had happened. And regarding Dave Lewis's remarks about, you know, he doesn't want to be too heavy-handed or something like that, I encourage you to be heavy-handed. Go hand out a ticket. The word will get passed and dog owners will fall in line. You'll all know each other. 8:00 to 11:00 at night is a bit late and a leashed dog will definitely be more aggressive than an unleashed dog because the leashed dog feels that he's in a defensive position. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lieberman. Appreciate your time. Next is Ms. Colleen Luxinger, and I do believe she's on.
Hello?
Hello.
They can hear me and I would turn on my, I would turn on my video. I just don't see the option to.
Well, we can hear you fine. If you can state your name and where you reside, that would be great.
Oh, here we go. Here we go. I think I see it. Yes, can you see me?
We can.
Okay. So as stated, I am Colleen McManus Luxinger, homeowner since 2014 and living in District Four near Huron and Bellevue. I am speaking to you today in support of off-leash dog privileges at Jason Duncan and Centennial City Parks. I did prepare a statement to read. So hello, Mayor and city council and staff. Thank you, staff, for your service to our city and taking the time to hear from the community and our neighbors on off-leash privileges at a number of our parks. I also really appreciate the study session discussion and I apologize for disrupting the flow with my hand being raised. It was in response to Mayor's question on the timeline of what was going on in 2008, 2009. And this is when this, the council, the city council approved moving forward with the off-leash hours. Unfortunately, this is not my first rodeo when it comes to fighting for keeping our off-leash privileges in our city parks. 12 years ago, I was acting vice president of Englewood Unleashed and spent many hours, days, and years supporting our cause to finally compromise in 2009 with the city on the off-leash hours that we have today. And back then to today, I really appreciate how the city is working with the community to do what is right for the majority. In my opinion, I believe the committee's proposal from our Parks and Rec Department comes down to safety as well as money, needing to spend less and make more to contribute to keeping our city beautiful. Myself and I believe many others would support helping the city pay, pay for like through fundraising efforts for additional signage that includes the hours, Englewood Unleashed Ambassador Program that take the lead, off-leash education, hiring more enforcement or park rangers to give violation tickets deserved, a dog registration fee that could be higher for non-residents visiting our parks, renting the pavilions for Englewood Unleashed meetings and events and in paying, adding more parks to Northern with off-leash hours, or adding short barriers in the parks that we've talked about a number of different times tonight, which I appreciate. These are just a few ideas. Many other good ones were heard too, but I'm sure if we put our heads together, we could come up with a lot more. I also believe that Englewood could lose more money. Our off-leash parks bring visitors to our city that also visit our businesses before, after exercising their dogs in the park. And some businesses that come to mind are car washes, liquor stores, Starbucks, grocery and convenience stores, gas stations, restaurants, a number of which were already mentioned tonight. And if they no longer can have their dogs off-leash in Englewood parks, then many will probably stay within their own neighborhoods and do their shopping there. I have been an Englewood resident and homeowner and taxpayer since 2014, but I also rented within Englewood's District One and Three from 2005 to 2013. There are many reasons why I decided to buy a home in Englewood, but within the top three was knowing I had a number of parks that I could take my dog Rocky to for exercising off-leash. I am one of many who have contributed to and will continue to help make our city parks beautiful through donated time, money towards park cleanups, our dog park itself, benches, trees, picnic tables, bricks, and so much more. And on a personal note, my friends and I have donated a park bench and had two trees planted in Jason Park in remembrance of our friend Courtney who passed away, Courtney Rogers, who was a former president of Englewood Unleashed. And so it was in remembrance of her, her mother, and three dogs who have also passed. And so this is a personal space for us to visit and remember and celebrate their lives with our dogs off-leash. So Mayor, City Council, and Parks and Rec, my ask is we continue to work together to find alternative ways to maintain or even expand the number of city parks with off-leash privileges, which drive community, exercise, healthy well-being, and joy to our city patrons, both human and canine, as well as for our neighbors that visit our city we all call home, Englewood, Colorado. I appreciate your time and consideration. Please feel free to contact me, Colleen McManus Luxinger, anytime, 518-209-9509.
Thank you, Ms. Lux. And thank you, and I appreciate your enlightening us. I do know that there was something in 2009, so I'll be looking for...
That's when the hours came.
Next up is Ms. Janice Brown, but I think she's asked to move to the three-minute time. So we'll move on to Lauren Benner, also here to speak about Englewood Unleashed.
Hey there, can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome. So I'm Lauren Benner. I live in Englewood. I am off of Dartmouth and Bannock, and I have been a homeowner here for about a year and then have taken my dog Sully to Jason Park, I guess just now about four months as the weather's gotten a little bit warmer. But I think first and foremost, I just wanted to thank everyone. This has been the first council meeting that I've sat in on and has been extremely informer, informing, excuse me, and just really appreciate your guys' effort, I guess, on this topic. Couple things, I guess, that I want to talk about is, first thing, just the sense of community already on this phone call. I've heard a number of people speak that I know my dog is good friends with their dogs. And I know that's weird to kind of talk like that, like their children, but they are... like they're children, but they are to us and we value that community. But the second thing that I wanted to talk about and just hit a couple of points hopefully throughout this that don't need comment, but just resonated with me that happened during the conversation. We talked about limiting social interaction and not affecting the community. One of the suggestions was to increase the number of adult leagues. I think that that can be limiting. I'm fortunate to be thirty and physically able, but I know a lot of the people that I interact with at Jason Park are over the age of fifty. A lot of them are pregnant. A lot of the women on this phone call that have already spoken are pregnant or just had their babies. And I think that that would just be limiting and kind of isolates to a core group of people that you're assuming can take advantage of that. The next thing would be I am in favor of increasing the signage and the licensing of animals. I think that those are two extremely easy things to go ahead and do in the immediate future before any drastic measures take place. I'm also in favor of having data-driven documentation as we're making these decisions. I don't think that we've had enough or in this conversation, I certainly haven't heard enough hard numbers to truly back up why the decisions are being made. If, oh, I'm sorry. With the, I guess, just the care of the park. So one of the, I forget who it was, but essentially was talking about if we were to fence in Jason Park, that it would be pretty much inobtainable to be able to keep it in grass shape. And to me, that kind of seemed like it was we're gonna fence it in and then we're just gonna kind of forget about it because up to this point, it hasn't been an issue to take care of the park. The park is in great shape. I take my dog there four to five times a week, and it looks great. I would rent it for soccer practice or so forth. So to me, that just was really discouraging to hear that they felt that that would just lead to it essentially turning to dirt because it seems though that it would become out of focus, and that's the last thing we want to happen because I truly do think if these areas are fenced in, constantly hearing just small area at this park, small area at that park, we're just flooding dogs into small areas, and it does not solve the problem. It's only just gonna create new problems. I think that was everything that I had on this list, but thank you, guys. Again, this was very informative and I do appreciate the efforts that are putting forth here. I don't think we've come to any solutions, and I do think this needs to have a continuing conversation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Benner, for coming and sharing your ideas. Next is Laura McKenzie, here to support off-leash again. Please state your name and the area that you reside.
My name is Laura McKenzie. I live in District One. Can you hear me okay?
You sure can.
I feel so very grateful to be part of the Inglewood community, listening to this meeting. I just so much love our city and am so thankful for everybody that's shown up to express what they believe is important. I've lived in Inglewood about fifteen years, homeowner and dog owner here. I go to Jason Park maybe five to eight times a week. Centennial Park as my backup on occasion. I am not a part of Inglewood Unleashed as a member, but it is because of a notice that they put in the park that I'm aware there's even concern about Jason Park. And most of what I'm going to say is about Jason Park ninety-five percent as the heart of my heart of our parks and Centennial maybe five percent. I was not aware that there was an issue at Jason Park until just recently. I thought we were doing a pretty good job with picking up the poop. If there is a concern about the poop on the soccer field, I kind of wondered why that is not being moved to Cushing Park. I live around the corner from Cushing. There's a big field there and there's already soccer goals there, and there's not the same question about dogs there. Just we'll throw that out there. As far as unruly dogs, that does happen on occasion. I think we are all hearing about that. But I did have two particular points in my notes that I wanted to make sure and spend my time on, and one is the issue of community. I've emailed all the city council members an email about please consider carefully whether you want to make or whether we want to make any changes during COVID-19 restrictions. You know, the Jason Park is not just a park for dogs, but it's a community of people that is using the parks on a regular basis. And for many people, it may be the only place that they're going right now under COVID-19 to have actual physical contact with people. And when we're talking about safety, I'm gonna ask the council to also consider this to be a public health issue, a wellness issue for mental health in particular. If we have a community of people that still remains in the midst of all these restrictions, do we really want to disturb that right now? And if so, can we do it, please, in a very planned manner with specific dates being announced so that there's some certainty around when these changes might take place? I think you can do an awful lot of good for the community's wellness by saying we're not going to change the rules as they are currently until this and such date, which gives us time to study and perhaps experiment with some solutions, but we're gonna leave it as it is for now, which is, of course, what I would prefer. That park is a light in dark places when all other lights have gone out. And the thought of not being able to be there freely as I wish with my dog during the stated hours, it's heartbreaking to me to think about. The second thing I think we need to look at is if we do actually have this many people coming from outside the city to use our parks, then I don't think the Parks Department weighing in is enough. I think there's a revenue issue. I think we have a stream of traffic coming to our city that we need to look at, especially in economic downturn times. I agree with the idea to create a Parks Pass program, get them on board and get them directed and handed something that takes them to dog-friendly places in the city, to our twenty-four-hour vet hospital, to places that they can pick up takeout food on their way out of the area. I'd like to see what Downtown Development Committee would say if we told them that we have perhaps dozens and perhaps hundreds, according to the first few speakers, of people coming from outside our area. How can we direct them to local businesses? Lastly, I do want to weigh in on some of the ideas. I am not a fan of enclosed dog parks. I find that's where the unruly dogs live. I do frequent Jason. I went and looked at it today and yes, would put a fence maybe between the playground and the larger part of the park so that there's a little more safety there, but I really would like to see that be done aesthetically well. The charm of Jason Park is that it's open, it's beautiful, it's so satisfying. And I'd like to keep it like that to the degree possible. I agree with the idea of rangers. I agree with the idea of Parks Pass and maybe something of an educational or or on-ramp program for the next year where if you are cited a warning for being off-leash, you can pay that or buy a Parks Pass and get people going and educated to new rules, new scenarios on how we're gonna use our parks. I just think Jason is totally a gem and could be presented and be a source of pride for all of us because of that. And I appreciate your time. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much, Ms. McKenzie, for coming tonight. Our next person, Stephen Jenkins, I believe, is not on the call. Is that correct?
That is correct, Merk. I believe the next person would be Barb Chumley.
Right. And just so you all know, Michael Feeley called in and he's going to come another night. Next is Barb Chumley. State your name and what area you live in. Ms. Chumley, can you hear us? Thought she was still on. Is she not on? I see you. I think she needs to be unmuted.
She is. We're asking to unmute.
Okay. There you go.
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Well, as you guys know, I'm Barb Chumley. I live in District Three. I'm in Joe's neighborhood. Coming to you with a couple of questions that I brought up a couple of weeks ago in response to getting a stop sign put in my crossover area. I have a couple fairly high-traffic zones where I live. And we had, no, thank you. Excuse the boy. He's a little impatient. But I actually took a ride yesterday because I was curious how many stop signs we had and how many speed limit signs we have. From Hampden to Shenango, there's five stop signs, obviously, in both directions. If you're headed southbound, there is zero, I'm sorry, there is four speed limit signs going from Hampden to Shenango. If you're headed from Shenango to Hampden, there's zero. There is not one stop sign that educates people on how fast they need to go or speed limit signs, sorry. That's part of the problem right here. I actually put a cone in the street that said, please slow down. And somebody stole my cone. So I'm not really sure what the answer is, but I'm looking to you guys to give me a little bit of advice on what I can do to get a stop sign put at the corner of Bannock and Radcliffe. You know, it's an ongoing issue. We've asked for a speed bumper, a stop sign in the past. And we were told we were not allowed to have it because it was a fire route. Well, since Denver Metro's taken over, they have designated Broadway and Huron as their designated streets that they choose to go on. There is no reason at this point why we can't have a stop sign at the four-way because that was the only reason we couldn't have one in the past. You know, Carl Howard died there. Had it been five minutes sooner, my son would have been the one that was laying in the street. And I'm looking to you guys to give me some answers on what we can do to get the stop sign installed, when we can make it happen, and what you need from me to make that work. You know, I don't know that there's even any activity going on as far as finding the person that was driving the truck. You know, there's a friend of Carl's that's walking around handing out the Crime Stoppers flyers and talking to people and saying, can you help me? Can you do, you know, what can you do so that we can find this person? You know, but I have not seen anything on the news. I have not seen anything in the paper. You know, and it needs to be addressed, and we need to hold the person accountable. But we also need to make the streets safe for our neighbors.
Are you finished, Ms. Chumley?
With that topic, yes, I'm finished. I was trying to clear my screen so I could see you guys.
All right, so we have two council members that have questions for you. You willing to entertain those?
Absolutely.
I believe, anyway. Yeah, first is Member Questa.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Chumley, and the point is very well taken. Mine is a council request to City Manager Lewis. I occasionally get the question too, in portions of my neighborhood, what does it take to get a stop sign? What is the threshold? How does the city go about that? I'm sure it's case by case, but if there's any guidelines that that City Manager Lewis can provide or hand it off to staff that they can provide, I'd certainly like some more information on that as well, and then that might help out Ms. Chumley in getting an idea.
Thank you. Any questions, Member Ring?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Chumley, for coming again and for speaking with us tonight. My question is, do you have the date when you made the initial request for the stop sign at that intersection?
It was, I want to say back in 2010 was the last time that we asked.
Okay, thank you very much. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you, Member, or thank you, Ms. Chumley, for coming, and it's a council request that's been submitted, so there'd be some follow-up. And next is Jaina London. I believe I saw her.
I actually, I skipped.
Mayor, would you mind us entertaining to ask really quickly? We have a phone number ending in nine, three, five, three. Would you mind answering with your name?
Yeah, that is Kaylee Wallace.
Thank you, Kaylee.
Thank you.
Is she on the next section?
She is on the next section. And next we have
Jaina London. I'm wondering.
We've got Jaina there. She's good to go.
Go ahead.
Hi, I don't know how to do video on here either, but hopefully you can hear me just fine.
We can hear you. Just state your name and where you reside.
One second, we lost her. Hold on.
Hello?
I don't see her.
I'm here. I got booted. I don't know what happened.
We can, no, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Jaina London. I am in District One. I am married to Mike London. I am a Colorado native. He is an Inglewood native. We currently live in the Library of Flood Middle School, if anybody remembers that. Of course, it got torn down and apartments were built there, so I guess our club room is the library or the gym, anyway. So a little bit of fun fact for you there. So of course, my husband's been going to all the parks here since he was a little boy, and we're very we're very excited to be able to speak on behalf of keeping the parks, most specifically Jason Park, unleashed. I thank you all so much. It's so late and we've all just been hanging in there. My dog is unhappy because normally this was the time we're there. We go nearly every day and have for more than a year with our two brand-new dogs that we got. I, when I first heard that this was a proposal to take away the off-leash privileges, my stomach literally fell out of my body. We stopped in our tracks and my husband was just beside himself. Just to kind of give you an idea, when I get in my car to go somewhere, my GPS automatically gives me directions to Jason Park. That's how often we're there. That's how much we love it, and it cracks people up. Home, Jason Park. That's what comes up. So you can see just how much this park is ingrained in my life and in my husband's life and for Jake and Elwood. So excited to see people on here that we know. The minute their name pops up, I'm like, Sully's mom, or you know, oh, that's Zen's dad, or that's a, you know, we know a lot of people that rescue or that foster. And they bring their dogs there, and so it's so fun to say, oh, my gosh, there they are. And this is more than just an off-leash dog park where you can go and let your dog run around. I have been coming here for a year. My husband traveled. He was let go in May. And I have been coming there alone, and people got to know me. They checked on me. They, if they didn't see me, they would worry. I felt more secure than just walking them in my neighborhood alone. I developed community and personal relationships that have gone outside of just the dog park. People that have supported me in many things, including my sobriety. That has been key in my mental health and and my sobriety. I'm putting myself out there at high risk to be able to just express to you how important that is and how much deeper it goes. And I'm of the position that I will do anything and everything anybody wants to be able to keep that option. Whether I agree with it or not, I feel that strongly about this park. I think park rangers are great. I'll volunteer to do it, or my husband will. Build a fence. I'll try and find you good quotes. I would prefer it to be aesthetic. I see, I don't really see the reason for it. I've gone to the people playing at the park. I've also gone to one of the soccer coaches that I had the privilege of of meeting when he was there practicing because I really wanted to understand from someone else's perspective other than my own to just, and I asked him, I said, you know, are the dogs peeing on your equipment? Are they coming after the kids? You know, some of the things that Pirate Youth Sports had indicated were some concerns why they might take their business elsewhere. And and that particular coach told me, no, no, there was no problem at all. And I witnessed our own group of off-leash people had given them their space. We were staying behind the back. What's that called? The backstop and letting them have their space, or people were walking very clearly around the outermost edges. I know our presence there has helped keep homeless populations and other people that we would not want at those parks out because we're simply occupying that space. So I feel like not only are we concerned for our own safety, we almost act as a neighborhood watch for that park. I could quote you a million. Thank you. I could quote you a million reasons why dog parks, off-leash specifically, are great, right? I hope I expressed myself. I'm super nervous because of, you know, everything. But again, I think we would be putting a lot of resources on those other parks. They would end up with problems that they hadn't hadn't anticipated simply by the sheer volume of people there. Fences, like I said, aesthetically, I'm not necessarily opposed licensing. Fences, like I said aesthetically, I'm not necessarily opposed licensing, all for it, fining, all for it. I would like, if with the licensing or something like that, there to be a foundation or scholarship, because some people have expressed to me they couldn't afford it. And one of the reasons they come there is because they don't have to pay a parks fee like at Chatfield or something like that. So I think that, um, um, I think that would be an important part too, to look out for our neighbors and, and people that aren't as fortunate, especially right now, um, to have some type of way to help pay for those licenses. Or entrance fees, whatever you have. So, thank you.
Time is up. Thank you very much for coming tonight, Ms. London. All right, that ends, um, our scheduled. Yes?
Um, I'm sorry, I, uh, I received a message from Barb Chumley. Uh, I think she may have misunderstood how her time worked. Um, and she had another topic that she wanted to speak on. I didn't know, uh, how we generally handle that.
Well, we time it at five minutes and I think we were there, but, um, I don't know. So she has another topic. Why don't we add? All right, give, let's give you another minute, Barb. Um, can we do that? Mute her.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll add a minute.
All right, I think it was actually like three minutes and 20 seconds. Um, but I did want to discuss a little bit about the dog parks with you guys. Um, as some of you may or may not know, I was president of Inglewood Leech for about eight years. And I worked diligently with the city council and Parks and Rec. Every weekend I was at no less than two hours in the parks, cleaning up, maintaining, handing out information, educating. Um, I reached out to you guys on many occasions and requested help, um, to little avail, um, because everything was running fine. Um, you know, me and Dave Lee worked hand in hand for many, many years. You guys keep mentioning the Northwest Green Belt. I'd love for you to take a walk over there, grab a poopy scooper and walk with me. Because what you're going to be picking up is needles and bottles. It's a pretty bad area. It's not one that I would recommend taking kids over to. Um, I loved it when we got it cleaned up. It was a great place to be. But if you guys are going to recommend people taking their dogs there, it needs to be maintained a little bit better. You know, as far as Cushing Park, you know, there is a lot of drug use over there. They have actually installed a needle, disposal in the men's bathroom over there. And that makes it kind of difficult to send your children in to go to the bathroom if you're there at the dog park. You know, I would do anything and everything to keep the dog parks open and have full use of them. Um, I have spent my own money printing flyers, handing out information, telling people what the rules are. Because I was told I was not allowed to hang signs on the fences or, put posts in the ground. You know, we have supplied people with dog bags. We've done several different fundraisers, you know? When we got the okay to get the water put in at Canine Corral, once the plans got put together and we found out the cost of it, it was actually, Dave Lee said it was three years. It took us one year to come up with the first $3,500 for that. So anything you guys need as far as support and information, I'm here to give it to you, but.
Thank you, Ms. Chumley. Your time is up. It's been a minute and a half. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your, um, work with us in the past. All right, that ends our, um, designated, uh, time, and I want to encourage all of you 18, 19 that are left, and maybe there's others to please, uh, stay to the rest of the night. We're going to be here for a while with regular items and also join us for the policing, uh, town hall on Wednesday night, because you're engaged, so we want to keep you engaged. The next, um, section is unscheduled and I'm not sure how many are up for that, but the same rules apply, except that it's three minutes and, uh, please be respectful. Jade, do you know how many we have there?
I currently have eight, um, starting with Janice Brown.
All right, and I'm going to encourage something. If you, um, have, uh, are going to say something about off-leash or something else had been said, please add something new to it and may perhaps just agree with others on, on other things. So I'll start with Janice Brown.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Hello, good evening. I was part of the water pressure loss on Illati Street and I want to do a special thanks to Peter Van Rye, crew chief Aaron Robinson, and the entire crew for their attention to our problem. Our problem was complicated by the fact that the city ditch runs directly through this area. And that resulted in the water going into the city ditch instead of surfacing. So these guys worked for days, and I mean days and days. One day they worked from eight o'clock in the morning till after 10 o'clock at night. Um, I'm not really sure what time they quit because I went to bed. But, um, I just want them to know how much we appreciate their diligent, hard work integrity and that Inglewood can be very proud of these workers. On a different topic, I have a request. With all the development going on in Inglewood, I think it is time that Inglewood considers a mandate on passing the gas and requiring all new builds, be they residential or commercial, to install clean renewable energy. We are in a climate emergency. With the upgrading of codes scheduled for August, now is the time for Inglewood to start by requiring all new builds to have clean renewable energy. We are running out of time to curb our greenhouse gases. Also, the state legislature passed two bills this year that are going to impact any kind of building that goes on. One of them is HB 201155. That's Higher Efficiency New Construction Residence. And the other one is SB 20055. And that's Incentive Development Recycling End Markets. Both of those are going to impact any kind of construction we have going. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind words for the staff too. Next, Jade.
Uh, next is Kaylee Wallace.
All right, Ms. Wallace, please state your name and where you are residing.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Kaylee Wallace and I'm a resident of District Number Three. And I'm also the current treasurer for the organization Inglewood Unleashed for the past two years. Um, my husband and I bought a home here in Inglewood in 2017 and have, um, visited Duncan Park nearly every day since we've moved here with our dogs and have enjoyed, um, greatly these off-leash privileges that the parks allow. And also the community that it has created for my husband and I. As we have, um, recently grown our family and have a 10-week-old son, we, um, just really love Inglewood and all that it has provided to us and our growing family. Especially all of the park visits that we have. Um, my husband is often the first person at Duncan Park in the early mornings while he's running our dogs. He's also walking around picking up trash that has been left from the previous afternoon soccer groups. That's something that hasn't been talked about this evening. Although these groups bring revenue to the city, they're also leaving their trash during their scheduled seasons without concern, which has been raised to our Parks Department, but, um, has not been addressed with the groups themselves, since there's trash left regularly every afternoon. Our new format within Inglewood Unleashed would appoint a park ambassador for each off-leash dog park. And they would be scheduling monthly cleanups in order to help keep our parks clean, whether that is dog poop or trash from the park visitors. And I think that's a really vital element to the organization and, um, keeping the parks, uh, clean and safe and welcome for all to enjoy, not just dog owners. I had a longer statement, but a lot of it has already been covered, so just echoing that, um, most importantly, I think data-driven decisions would be the most beneficial to our city and strategically find solutions that would best fit not only our community's needs, but interests, um, of all citizens. So, uh, I'll wrap up since it's very, very late. I want to thank you all for listening and taking the time to consider this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace, and congratulations on your 10-week-old.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next is Sarah Harkness.
Great. Ms. Harkness, go ahead.
Hi. Okay. Um, hi, my name is Sarah Harkness. I live in District One. I'm speaking tonight to express support for making changes to the current off-leash dog situation in Inglewood. The report from the Parks and Rec Commission highlights just some of the issues and concerns from the community. I'm a parent, I'm both a parent and a dog owner. I have two dogs, two daughters and two dogs. My daughters love to go to the park to ride their bikes, skateboard, do cartwheels, play basketball, um, play on the playground. And my dogs love to go for walks at the park, smell all the smells and roll in the grass. My concern is a bit different from others expressed tonight, as I don't live near or visit the off-leash parks. Um, if my neighborhood park was off-leash, I would avoid going there. My biggest concern with Inglewood's off-leash dog situation is that there's very little enforcement. In spite of the fact that we have five off-leash options, options for dogs in the city, the unleashed parks are still constantly overrun with dogs, off-leash. Um, in the last three weeks alone at Bates Logan, my daughter's skateboard has been attacked by off-leash dogs while she was riding it. First time the dog owner just yelled, "It's not you, it's the skateboard", taking no responsibility whatsoever. The second incident occurred last night. A small dog went after her every time she passed by on the pathway and she finally told the owner that he should leash his dog. He responded by calling her a stupid girl. My dogs are rescued. They have issues and don't react well to being approached by off-leash dogs. I usually avoid the park while walking them because I have no way of knowing if it's safe or not to walk through if there are off-leash dogs present. I don't know who will approach and who won't. Some are really great and others, their dogs will come charging at us. And Bates Logan is not an off-leash dog park, but most of the time there's off-leash dogs there. I'm asking for increased enforcement of leash laws as well as the rules surrounding dog parks at all of Inglewood parks. I'm asking for increased signage notifying park users of the rules in more visible locations. Um, I'm asking for you to take the report from Parks and Rec Commission seriously and explore further to see if changing locations would help and be wanted and welcome in the parks that were recommended. Um, I'm also asking for fenced scenarios for dogs. And I totally disagree with the idea of fencing in playgrounds. I don't think that would solve the issue. Um, the ultimate goal is to make the parks accessible, safe and enjoyable for everyone. I hope you'll look into hiring additional code officers and/or park rangers when deciding the budget for next year so the rules can be enforced. Lack of enforcement is the biggest issue and I hope you'll consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harkness. Our next person, Jade.
Would be Ryan Woods. But it looks like he may have hopped off. Um, Elizabeth Rarden.
Hi.
Great, thanks, Elizabeth. Can you give us your full name and where you live in Inglewood?
Hi, I'm actually Elizabeth Rarden Murphy and I live in District Four. And first, I just want to thank you for your thoughtful deliberations and questions about the off-leash dog park. Um, I'm a proud Inglewood resident. My husband and I love it very much and we're so excited to raise our kids here. Our first baby is coming in one month. So as we look for houses, we've decided to look strictly in Inglewood. And that's mostly because of Jason Park and the community that we've found. We got our dog two weeks before coronavirus and we haven't really been leaving the area very much to stay safe, so it's been a blessing to have this community where people have been connecting for like over 30 years with their dogs and with people. Um, we live in Oxford Station Apartments right now. So it's a large apartment building and there's no grass. So a lot of people live here because of the easy access to Jason Park and I think that many of us are then looking to stay here long-term and buy houses and continue being part of this community because of that. Although the subcommittee recommends that Inglewood Parks and Rec can sponsor other events to promote community, I personally know as an elementary school teacher, dog mom, and soon to be human mom, I did not have the bandwidth to join an adult sports league. But since my dog needs exercise and socialization, I can make the dog park a priority and continue feeling connected to the community in a genuine and consistent way. Um, everyone I've talked to at Jason Park is willing to compromise to find a solution that works for pet owners, parents, sports teams, and neighbors. People are willing to put up a fence, not come during sporting events, pay a fee for yearly usage with a higher fee for non-residents, serve as ambassadors for the park. Uh, people seem willing to get off-leash certified and having continued education and signage so that people and pets can coexist. I think that the willingness to implement any of these measures shows how important the off-leash parks are to our community. And I think we can use fences to create boundaries and really find solutions that work for our community. Uh, based on the data provided in the Spring 2020 survey of off-leash dogs and the Take the Lead proposal, getting rid of off-leash privileges at Duncan, Centennial, and Jason seems really premature. The studies conducted this spring only had 70 participants. My husband's in grad school and we know it's really hard to get people to respond to surveys, but Inglewood has 34,690 residents. So those respondents were a really, really small portion of Inglewood. I looked it up today and the American Veterinary Medical Association said that 65% of households in Colorado have dogs. This was in 2017. So I think that by allowing parks to have off-leash dogs and family access, Inglewood is very appealing to the young professionals with kids who are also having dogs and looking to find their like permanent community to settle down in. In the four months that we've been going, if there's even a slightly aggressive.
Time is up. I'm sorry.
Thank you so much for allowing me to.
Thank you for coming. And our next person?
Dana Liebert.
Dana Liebert? Or Liebert?
Yeah. We're asking to unmute.
Just pretend they're walking up to the podium.
Dana Liebert, if you're on the call, if you could just unmute yourself.
Let's go on to the next person and perhaps you can unmute as we go.
Next will be Toran Murphy.
Thank you. Toran, if you can state your name and area of residence.
Hi there. I am Toran Murphy. Um, I'm also a resident of District Four. That was my wife, Elizabeth, who just spoke. So I'm kind of going to pick up where she left off. Um, so yeah, further looking at the number of code violations, um, from the Take the Lead proposal in 2019 and 2020, there were very few code enforcement cases at Jason or Duncan. When we had seen incidents of an even slightly aggressive dog, the owner has immediately leashed their dog, apologized, and left the park, which suggests that most people are comfortable self and community regulating. Nothing in the data suggests that eliminating off-leash privileges at these parks will help solve the problems brought up by the subcommittee at today's meeting. It seems like the plan to eliminate these parks and add brand-new ones could lead to more problems, or at least different problems. Jason Park's heavy usage was repeatedly mentioned as problematic for the turf in the proposal from the subcommittee, so closing it will force people to go to other areas, which will then be heavily used as well. There seems to be compromises available and willing people to help create successful partnerships between the Parks Department, dog owners, and families. Instead of spending the money to develop new parks after closing the existing ones, why not try some of the measures recommended previously by the Off-Leash Dogs Subcommittee? I fully support the, uh, the ideas suggested by code enforcement. I read in the document, including dog licensing, registration, and tagging. The registration fees could help make up for the lost revenue of youth sports. The majority of households in Colorado own dogs and providing these spaces is a huge straw for Inglewood. The majority of dog owners at Jason Park are respectful and conscientious and will work with the city to ensure that off-leash dog parks remain a safe and beautiful place for everyone. And to piggyback on what my wife said, um, for us, it's been a huge place for, uh, socializing, especially in these times during coronavirus. And for me, it has been, um, a godsend in these times. It's really a social outlet that I really enjoy too, going to at least once a day, often twice. We have met a really great community of people and I think taking this away would be a huge, just negative in my life and it would definitely, uh, have my wife and I strongly consider, uh, looking for houses outside of Inglewood when currently we are really happy to stay and, uh, continue to visit the parks and, uh, you know. you know, pay taxes as Inglewood residents. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Um, next Jade, is it Patricia?
Next and last is Patricia Mitchell.
Okay, great.
Hi, um, I'm just getting home from walking my dog. Um, I am a Denver, um, a Denver resident. I live, um, on South Pearl Street. And I came to Jason at the, um, recommendation of a friend. I have met wonderful people, um, some of the people who've just been speaking and our dogs love each other. And we have a group text to, um, find out when people are going because our dogs want to, um, socialize with each other. Um, I want to focus my comment mainly, um, on my profession. I happen to be, um, a real estate broker. And I can tell you for a fact that the majority of millennials, um, which is our largest home buying segment right now, um, most of them in Denver have dogs. And they, when they're looking to buy a house, they want a place where they can take their dog off-leash. Um, and again, not every dog, you know, is good for off-leash, but it's a huge draw. And Inglewood is absolutely one of the places that I recommend to most of my clients who have dogs because of my experience at Jason Park. Um, beyond that, I can tell you matter-of-factly that I do a lot of shopping in Inglewood because I am at Jason Park once or twice a day, um, three to five times a week. And if I wasn't there, I would not just be driving to Inglewood to shop. Um, so I do think it's a source of revenue, uh, for any of us coming from outside of Inglewood. And again, um, a huge draw for new homeowners. Um, finally, the idea of, um, fencing in any kind of a dog park, um, is problematic for me. That's why I don't take, I don't take my dog to fenced-in dog parks because the owners tend to not watch their dog. And that's when trouble can ensue between dogs and they don't pick up the poop and they don't, um, take care that their dog is playing well with others. That does not happen at Jason Park because owners are watching their dogs because it's not fully fenced. And, um, we're watching so we can call out who might be pooping and their owner picks it up or we do. And we're watching to make sure our dogs play nice. So I do support the idea of, um, a low barrier, um, a small fence that would run on the north side of the pavilion and encompass some grassy tree area and go all the way out to the parking lot and then maybe even on the east side. But don't, you don't have to enclose the whole parking, uh, the whole playground and pavilion area. But just create that barrier between, um, the larger dog area and the, um, the play yard and pavilion so that dogs don't just go over there because the, um, you know, because the kids are calling them to come. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mitchell, and keep buying Inglewood. All right, that ends our, um, unscheduled, uh, end. Member Anderson is going to respond and I think it should be very easy to go quickly.
Yes, of course. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you everyone who came out to speak tonight. Um, I just want to kind of respond as a group to all of those of you who came out in favor of the dog parks. Um, you're, you know, I, I love the fact that community is being built at our parks. I think we have something, um, has something unique going on. We've, uh, I have gone there with my family and my dog as well, and I think it's a great thing. Um, and we, I hope, I hope you got the sense for those of you who saw the study session tonight that we're not rushing into anything, but we are taking all sides into consideration and all the concerns uh, with the proximity of our off-leash areas to the playgrounds and the concerns that that brings up. So, um, there is time to continue collecting data and, uh, I hope, I hope you'll find that we, we take our time and make the best decision that hopefully works really well for everybody. And I'm so glad to hear that everyone is interested in a compromise because I, I do think that's what's needed here. Um, but I really appreciate you all coming out. Um, and then to those of you who also spoke about, uh, in favor of changes to dog parks, Mr. Gilbert and, uh, Ms. Harkness, thank you for coming out as well and your concerns will certainly be taken into consideration also. And I wanted to speak to, uh, Ms. Chumley's request, uh, for more information. And I, I want to thank Councilman Requesta for turning that into a council request. I do think that Banock Street deserves some attention, um, in terms of traffic calming as well. I can think of other streets as well in the two biggest concerns. And Jason, or Banock being a one-way street between, with no stop signs between Kenyon and Oxford. Um, it's unfortunate that we, and then beyond there as well, not having any stop signs going south from there, even when it turns into a two-way street is a real concern. I don't know if there are any limitations, um, in terms of putting in additional stop signs or other traffic calming measures. Um, but I do, I also have a neighbor who was hit by a car on Banock Street and spent some time in the hospital as well. Uh, and so that, that street really does concern me. It gets a lot of really fast traffic. And I would like to see something done there and, um, certainly support, uh, Councilmember Requesta's request on that for, um, additional traffic calming. Maybe that's something also that E-Tech could take, take a look at in terms of future traffic calming. So put that on, uh, on Mayor Protim Sierra's radar for E-Tech as well. So, um, and then, uh, thank you to Ms. Brown for coming out and speaking, uh, in gratitude for our public works and the job that they did dealing with that water issue on Alati. And, uh, appreciate having someone come out just to, to thank our staff. So, um, with that, I'll conclude my response to public comment.
Thank you very much. Uh, Council, let's take a five-minute recess again. Uh, we actually kept under an hour and a half for all, pretty much. So we did, we did okay. So let's take a five-minute, uh, recess and be back at, uh, what time is it?
Mayor, could I request eight minutes?
Good, sure. Why not? Why eight? Okay, what time is that then? Forty. No, let's be back at, uh, 45.
Okay, thank you.
I have a C. Let's, uh, let's get back. Uh, we have no consent agenda items nor, uh, a public hearing tonight. So on to Agenda Item 11A1, under Ordinances, Resolutions and motions. Um, 11A1 is CB 26, approval of an IGA with the Mile High Flood District, uh, for design and construction of Little Dry Creek Plaza drainage and flood control. And tonight, rather than having a presentation on this, we're actually going to move to what we used to do and just ask questions. And here tonight, our Capital Projects and Engineer Manager, Tim, who's an, excuse me, Capital Project Engineer, Devin Keener. So, um, questions, um, we'll start out with Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, I just had a question on, on the scope of the project. I saw that, um, it was a grate on the inlet there and as well as improvements to the, um, the, the, the actual Little Dry Creek ditch and, uh, and then maybe some landscaping. Uh, I, but there was a conceptual drawing at the end. It's not doing all of the work on the conceptual drawing. Is that accurate? It's just some kind of, some of the, some of the, some of the stuff on there perhaps, but not everything?
Yes, that is correct. We're, uh, down closer to where the inlet grate needs to go or the safety grate over that opening. We're gonna work down on that end. The funding only allows us to probably do a little bit of improvement around the grate area there. We won't be moving too far upstream from that.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. That's my only question. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Any other questions? Mr. Hose or others? No, uh, Member Russell? You're muted.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, is this area in the Downtown Development Authority area?
That's a question I'm not sure of there. I'm not sure. Dave, do you know that, Dave Lee?
It is part of the Downtown Development Area.
How, and this may be for the city attorney, how will that impact that area if they decide to change what we're doing now?
Member Russell, I don't know the answer to that question. It's a great question. Can you turn that into a council request and get it back to you in the next day?
Okay, I would be happy to do that. Um, the other question I have is, does the city pay for all of everything that's being done and then get reimbursed from Mile High Flood District? Or do they pay it and we reimburse them?
So the way it works is the city pays their half of the cost to the Mile High Flood District and then they design and manage the, uh, construction. So we give them our share of the money and then they, they get it built for us.
Okay, uh, thank you. That answers my two questions.
All right, other questions? Remind us all that this is on first reading, so if you have, for the questions of information. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve so that we can move into discussion.
I move to approve CB 26, approval of IGA with Mile High Flood District for design of Little Dry Creek Plaza drainage and flood control.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Could you have a second?
I second.
That, okay. Mayor Protim seconds. All right, discussion. Member, uh, Russell.
Um, if it does impact, um, what we do now and there is some liability or something, I'm thinking that we need the answer to that question before we pass it, rather than after we pass it.
All right, others? All right, well, I'll speak up. I, I, I think we have an opportunity about no the next time around. I think we can move this through, get the information. I can't imagine that we would, that anything would change because the flood mitigation and control improvements are needed regardless. So, uh, Manager Lewis, I don't know if you or Director DeAndre have anything more to add to that.
Thank you, Mayor. Not on the flooding per se. Um, Director DeAndre could address that. But on the question about the Downtown Development Authority, I think it's a really legitimate question. And frankly, I had the same one when I, uh, saw the work proposed. What I can tell you is that the Parks Master Plan, as well as, um, uh, a number of planning sessions available that have been done, uh, actually, uh, call for the changes, um, to this park that are consistent with that, uh, particular plan and with the plan that's in front of you today.
So, Manager Lewis, can I follow up with you on that?
Sure. Sure.
Would the way that, that they go about this change anything for the DDA? I mean, there might be some legal things, maybe. I don't know, but.
No, and ultimately, you know, any of these public projects and infrastructure projects are not going to be under the authority of the DDA, assuming that it gets, um, approved. That is still going to be under the purview and direction of the City Council. Uh, so certainly the DDA could say, well, we want the pond back. Um, and this action could, you know, negate the ability to get the pond back. However, the public process that was gone through to get to the park plan that's currently in place um, for this particular area does not call for the pond. And I think there is pretty broad consensus among staff and previous councils um, that the pond, uh, would be better served as a, you know, a naturalized channel that's being called for in this plan. So I, I would just remind you that council, not the DDA, will be in control of decisions such as that.
And then Director DeAndre, did you want to add to that or no?
Uh, just, I would, um, agree with what you had said, Mayor Olson, is that this really is about uh, controlling the safety of the inlet there and making sure that, um, we have a safety grade in place and it really doesn't affect, you know, how we would do that under a DDA or, or not.
All right, back to Member Russell. I think she's still not with the hand up now.
Um, thank you, Mayor. And on, uh, page four, which is paragraph seven of the contract, um, it says, um, however, the city shall not be responsible for the actions of third parties that would violate the provisions of this paragraph, who may have legal rights in the property as long as the city has taken reasonable actions to stop those actions. In the event the city breaches the terms of the provisions of this paragraph seven and does not voluntarily cure at set forth above, the district shall have the right to pursue a claim against the city for specific performance of this agreement. So if we do something, design it, and Mile High Flood District pays for it, and then something in the plans that the DDA would change, they won't be able to do it. And if they do do it and we don't force them to change, the city could be held liable. That's why I asked the question about the contract. Is there something in the contract that would change if the DDA changes the plans in that area? That's my, that's all that I was saying. So.
Any other comments?
So actually, can I just say one more thing? Um, while I have the, um, I will not be supporting it tonight. If the answer comes back that everything's fine, I'll support it next time.
All right. Anybody else? Seeing none, uh, please vote through a roll call.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes and one nay. One nay being Councilmember Russell.
Thank you. It'll come back on second reading in the regular. Uh, the next is Agenda Item 11A2, CB 28. Staff recommends City Council approve a bill for an ordinance authorized in an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Colorado Department of Revenue, allowing taxpayers the opportunity to file tax returns in a single application within state sales use and use tax software, SUTS system. And our staff person for this is, uh, Director Finance Maria Sabada and Revenue and Tax Audit Supervisor Heather Driscoll. Um, again, we're gonna just take questions. So any questions for these two staff members? Seeing, okay, Member Anderson.
The, uh, the only question I have is that is, um, I, I saw in there that this doesn't, there's no real threat to our home rule status. Is there, there anything the city has to worry about with, is money going to be passed through the state or anything like that where, um, we lose some ability to control our, our revenue or anything like that that, uh, you guys are aware of on the finance side?
No, with this, so they'll, um, a large corporation, let's say they have multiple, uh, locations within Colorado versus having to log into each jurisdiction. They'll go into their, into the state's portal and they'll pay, file and pay for each municipality and make one payment. It'll be divvied to each jurisdiction and then we do have a fee of roughly $260 a year. And that's so the state charges a dollar a day for any ACH transfer. And so it will just come directly to us. The funds stay still within our, our allocation and control. We're not ceasing anything. It's just simply for convenience.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Member Russell.
Thank you. Um, so will it make it more difficult for, um, for businesses to avoid paying taxes by doing this? Will it make it easier for the city to get compliance?
Yes, we do expect, uh, increased voluntary compliance with this because with, you know, if somebody comes into register, they're gonna select wherever they're doing business. And then they'll be able to see what we tax, what we don't tax via the, um, GIS system that they have in collaboration. And so by only having to go to one site to log in and pay everything and file, it's, you know, gonna be like, oh yeah, I don't mind doing this one and that one. And, you know, it's not that every taxpayer has to go there, you know, small businesses that maybe just have one location. They'll still be utilizing our regular MuniRev system. So it simply just, it increases voluntary compliance. And yeah, we do expect to see some revenue increase from that.
So it is because they become more aware. It, it's not because perhaps they were trying to avoid it. It's just that if they had a, if they have a big corporation and owe taxes a lot of places, they may miss something.
Exactly. And Colorado does have one of the most complicated sales and use tax structures in the country. And so this is part of that sales tax simple, simplification, um, that we've been moving towards. And so it's just for that convenience.
Okay, so will eventually we go away totally from MuniRev?
Uh, actually, I don't anticipate, anticipate that as at all because the SET system is actually MuniRev. And so it will integrate seamlessly with our system. Whereas some municipalities, sorry, I'm a little tired, uh, use Gentax or TTR. And so they're going to get an Excel report or they're going to have to pay for an integration. Whereas ours will just, uh, smoothly come into our report system. But it will show that it was done via the state system. And so I fully anticipate that we'll have MuniRev for a while.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, of course.
There are no other hands, so I'll entertain a motion to approve CB 28. Do you have a motion?
I move to approve Council Bill 28.
Thank you, Member Wink. Could you have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote by roll call.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. That's what comes back under consent agenda at the next regular meeting time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is 11C1, uh, under Resolutions and motions. This is a Staff recommends City Council approve a resolution that purchase of, uh, rugged computers for the police department, rugged computer project at a total cost of $276,550.91. Deputy Information Technology Director Jeremy King and Police Commander Vance Fender are here to answer questions. Any questions for these two staff professionals? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve, to go into discussion.
I move to approve 11C1, purchase of rugged computers for the police department.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Member Wink. Any further discussion? I hope they're really rugged. All right, Member Stone has, has something he wants to say.
Yeah, sorry. I should have raised my hand during the question portion. Um, I actually do have a couple of questions about this. Um, so I did notice that there were 63 GTAX. Um, and I know that those are rugged, uh, workbooks. Um, there's also five HP Elite books and a, uh, 5430 curved monitor. And I was wondering why those are being included in a purchase of rugged workbooks for out in the field? Because those are very specifically, uh, not rugged books for, for out in the field. Um, and that curved monitor is like 70 inches or something like that. Um, so I was just wondering why those are being, uh, included in this purchase, uh, from an account that's specifically allotted for, uh, rugged books for the field.
The, uh, the computer, the, this project encompassed, uh, the replacement of all of the P, all the police department's computers and to assign a rugged computer to each officer. And those HP X360s are really for command staff because their machines are running about five, five years old. And then we also talked with what kind of monitors would they want? Would they want, you know, the 34 inch curved or two monitors? And we went, what would help them do their job a little bit better to, to see that at their desk of what they're doing? Because each, there, you also see the, um, the docks too, that would outfit a, um, a desk to be, to be, they can just, uh, plop their machine down and have more of a desktop situation than actually a small screen, uh, to look at. So that's, uh, why all that stuff was put in there to make sure that the PD, all of their equipment is replaced in a timely manner.
Cool, that's it.
And these machines, um, these machines are on a replacement schedule for five years. So that's where all of these machines will be replaced.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Great. I think that's it. Um, let's vote by roll call.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. And then 11C2, Staff recommends, uh, City Council approve by motion the Inglewood Strategic Plan. And, uh, this is, we'll work for them, will be in the works for the next two years. And the action will finalize the plan and trigger regular updates from staff to council on progress thereof. Um, so our City Manager Lewis is here along with Neighborhood Resources Coordinator Madeline Hinkfest. So I think that, um, tonight we'll just answer questions. Is this something we've seen before? We have gone through this. So any further questions or concerns? I guess questions first. Given you time, just, um, look. Seeing none, who wants to make motion to approve?
I move to approve Agenda Item 11C2, Inglewood Strategic Plan.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Member Stone. Any further conversation? Member Stone?
Uh, I just want to make sure that we, uh, run through with a, a fine tooth comb, um, on this and make sure that, uh, everything, um, is, is, uh, grammatically, uh, understandable and, uh, the spelling is all correct. I think it, it all makes sense and looks great, but I did find a few spelling errors and stuff like that. I'm not gonna take the time to point them out. Somebody can proofread it. Um, but I do want to say that I think that they did, that, that our staff did a really great job of, uh, capturing all of our individual thoughts and synthesizing those into, um, a plan that I think will serve Inglewood very well going forward.
Thank you. Member Stone, um, are there mistakes that you found easy to be caught on spell check? Or is it something that somebody might not notice?
Yeah, I think it's mostly stuff that, I, I don't think it's like accidentally spelling with like a, a homonym or something like that. It's like somebody just accidentally double tapped a letter while spelling a word, stuff like that, stuff that should pop up pretty quick.
Maybe just email them tomorrow to.
Sure.
Andrew Lewis.
Very, very easy mistakes to make that I make all the time.
Good eye, good eye. Uh, Member Russell?
Thank you. Actually, that, when Councilmember Stone brought that up, that reminded me of something. Undermine on the, um, Inglewood Council Vision Statements, it wouldn't have come up as a spelling error. It says, uh, and the city is fiscal responsibility. It should be, the city is fiscally responsible.
Yeah, it should have come up on a grammar check. So that's why I was asking if there was this, if it would pick up. Maybe your program that you're using for the writing of this doesn't have that. Sometimes it doesn't. So, but anyway.
Excel, Excel does not have great.
Oh, yeah. But. No, Excel is bad for that.
Another good look over before we, uh, print. But thank you, both of you.
So if anybody sees any other mistakes, send them tomorrow. Member Russell, are you finished?
Uh, I just would like to ask one more question. And, and so nothing changed in here from our last discussion, right?
Well, actually, uh, Mayor and, uh, Councilmember Russell, it did, but only if you, um, asked for it. So, um, some of the prior, the rankings, um, we made a few adjustments based on your discussion on the rankings. Also under safety, um, we ensured, for instance, that reduced speed in neighborhoods and traffic calming measures where appropriate shifted up and some other goals down. So it was mainly in the prioritization, um, that we made some changes based on the version that you saw during the study session.
Okay, so the last study session when we talked about that, they were based on that, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great. We get to pass our first strategic plan together. Uh, let's vote. Roll call.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. 11C2 passes. All right, so the COVID-19 update. Um, Manager Lewis and I had a quick phone call in between on our break and talked about, um, him just sending it to us, but opening it up for any particular questions you might have. If that makes sense to you all to do. So does anybody have questions based on anything that's happened in the last week that you want to ask? Member Russell?
Thank you. Um, when I was reading, I believe it was the Arapahoe County Emergency Management, um, report. Did I read in there that it says it was their last report and they're disbanding?
Um, Mayor and Councilmember Russell, um, that's a good question. I, I believe that they actually stopped doing, well, I mean, we, we stood down the EOC, um, a number of weeks ago. I mean, uh, uh, I think over a month ago. Um, but they have been doing regular reports. I did not, uh, notice that they were going to discontinue doing those reports, but I'll be glad to get that answer for you tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, I'd appreciate it if you checked that, but I just think I remembered reading that.
And I have stopped forwarding those to you. Um, but Brad Power, uh, serving in his role, um, as the Recovery Manager, has been including, um, the recovery, the county's recovery, uh, group report in the COVID report that I just emailed to council. Um, but in terms of the Emergency Operations Center or Emergency Management at the county level, their report, I have, I have discontinued forwarding that to you, but I can certainly, um, resume that if you like. It became somewhat similar to our, um, emergency report and then it, it did, it had very little new information.
Right. Okay, I just appreciate, I mean, I, I, if they're discontinuing it, that's fine. So.
I'll check on that.
Okay, thank you.
Member Questa, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, City Manager Lewis, you sent an email on Thursday that pointed out that, um, there had been an over 5% increase, I believe, in Arapahoe County, uh, and that if that. an over 5% increase, I believe, in Arapahoe County, and that if that is not corrected in the next two weeks, we could lose our variances. Can you tell me what that would mean for Inglewood businesses, anything that we've opened, public institutions, a Pirates Cove, rec center, et cetera?
Sure, and I would like to tag-team this answer with our city attorney, who's really familiar with all of those documents, but in terms of the direct impact on Inglewood as an organization, the city of Inglewood, the biggest impact would be to Pirates Cove in that the variance actually allowed us to go from 150 occupants to 250 occupants, and we have, you know, received a lot of praise for the way in which that has opened and the feeling of safety that our customers have felt as part of that, and we have not had any known cases as a result of that. So when we would reduce by 100 persons per day, at a time, I should say, and that's per shift and two-hour shifts, we would go from barely making a little bit of money to losing a significant amount of money. So that would be the biggest impact from, on the city. In terms of our businesses, we have a little bit less impact in most categories because the, we do not have large restaurants or bars that can, you know, accommodate hundreds of people. So the variance that the county requested allowed people to go up to 50%, regardless of the total number. So our bars and restaurants would likely see very little change if we lost the variance. However, there are a number of businesses such as gyms and entertainment-related venues such as Felt, if you remember, is operating under a variance that allows them to do some things that they will not be able to do and have significant reductions and/or inability to open should we lose that variance. But if the attorney has any additional comments, invite her to add.
I don't have any additional comments. You did a great job of covering that.
Well, thank you, City Manager Louis, that's helpful. And your email went out, I think it was on the 16th. Do you know when that will be checked again, when they'll run that count again to see if we've gotten below that required 5%?
Yes, I sent the email, I think, this morning of the 16th. I was notified that we had informed the state that we were over that 5% limit on the 15th. So it'll be 14 days following the 15th.
Okay, thank you. I guess one final distinction, I was thinking it was 5% for all of Arapahoe County, not specifically Inglewood. That is, is that correct?
You are correct. It's for the whole county. We don't have to report jurisdiction by jurisdiction. We only have to report as a county.
Oh, this is more observational. I am a bit nervous about it, and even judging by your report tonight, it seems that we're heading more in an upward direction, not, not a totally upward spike, but it's going higher as opposed to going lower. But I guess we'll see what happens over the next few days here. Very good, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Member Anderson is next.
Thank you, Mayor. My only question, City Manager Louis, is with regard to mask orders, now that the governor's released a mask order, what is your plan in terms of rescinding our order? And what, how are conflicts between the tri-county order and the state order affected? I know the big ones are, tri-county was like six and over didn't have to wear a mask, and state is 10 and over, you know, maybe this is for City Attorney McKinney Brown. And then, and then if our order is still in effect, I don't know what differences are there. So I just wanted to seek some clarity on that.
I'll just introduce the topic by saying it has been a moving target, and Allison, City Attorney Brown does have the latest information on that.
So I should tell you that the city manager has already rescinded the city's emergency order in deference to the existing state order, but you should know that we are covered by both the state and the county at this time. So whichever is more restrictive is the rules that apply to Inglewood. The way the state order was written very specifically said that counties were encouraged to adopt more restrictive measures, and Arapahoe County had already adopted slightly more restrictive measures. So the age of 10, I think the state went with, came out of Fort Collins, but most of the municipalities in our region went with age three. Arapahoe County went with the age six because Inglewood went with age six. So Arapahoe County was very differential to Inglewood when they put their, their order together. And again, most, for the most part, we are going to see more impact from the county order than we are from the state.
Okay, thank you. And I did read somewhere, I think it was in an article, not an official order, that, that the county was considering amending theirs to go with 10, just to eliminate confusion, but maybe we'll get more clarity on that tomorrow on that call. So I'm going to join that call tomorrow. All right, thank you.
I think that's true, Member Anderson. Dr. Douglas asked me if we'd be really upset by it, and I said, "You guys do what you think is best for our health, and we're going to go with what you think is best for our health." So people were just picking random, you know, times, like three-year-olds can wear them. I know several daycare centers that are using them, but six-year-olds, 10, whatever. But we'll find out tomorrow. Theirs goes into effect on Friday, right? Is that right? City Attorney, yeah.
That's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I don't see any other hands up. I did want to make a, one observation from the report that you gave us on Friday. I believe there's a typographical, or just a typo in there about the numbers of Inglewood cases. It actually was the Arapahoe number of cases, not Inglewoods. So when I first read it, I really freaked out, and then I realized, oh, I think you just put in the wrong numbers under Inglewood. Just maybe just take a look at it.
Okay, we'll get that revised, thank you.
Thanks. All right. Moving on to item 13, which is general discussion, and the first off is mayor's choice. I would like to bring before you the Affordable Housing Letter of Support, which you've all seen, and we'd heard about it a couple of weeks ago that this was coming. The timing of it was just a little off for the manager to get it into the notes, and so I made a decision along with him on Friday, go ahead and send it out to you all so they're right up to the final date in two weeks at our next meeting. This gives them some leeway time. So I guess I'd like to hear any specifics. And Member Anderson, I know you've been involved in this in some way, but I guess I'll open for any questions about this and then a motion. Member Russell?
I have a problem with this being on the agenda because the agenda was set and sent out at 5:00 PM on Thursday night, and I get a call at, or a text at 3:00 PM the next day that staff would have had to bring out an email. Our policy says that we will not add things to the agenda after 5:00 PM on Thursday night, and it was an addition to the agenda. And so I am opposed to this. It wasn't our fault. If they didn't get the information in, I'm sorry, but we have a deadline, and our policy says we're not going to do it. So I am opposed to this.
Member Russell, where do you see the policy saying that we can't add any agenda items? We've done it before.
I know, you're doing it all the time, and we're not supposed to. It is in our council policy manual.
Where, I'm just asking you where. All right, agenda, so, Member Stone?
I guess I kind of have a point of clarification question. Is this council member's choice? It is, right?
It's an item that we put under mayor's choice. We could have put it under the managers, which probably would have been more appropriate in the future. That's probably how we'll do it.
So when, when it's mayor's choice, if this had not been added to the agenda and you decided that you wanted to present it to us right now, could you not have done that?
Probably. I mean, we've done it in the past, and, but it's probably more appropriate to, for something like this that came through.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to step in, the rules allow you to amend your agenda, make a motion. So typically, what you've historically done is, the mayor has put it on under mayor's, or mayor's choice, but in order to take action on it, the group has to vote that they're going to amend their agenda to allow action on that matter. I think when it was put on the agenda on Friday, it was because there was, there would probably be at least discussion on this matter, and the city manager was anxious that, in the interest of transparency, that the community know that this was out there, some cases, anyone had any comments. At the same time, the council was discussing it, the community would have that opportunity as well.
All right, so that's not quite what I was told last week about how we do this, but if we need, so our city attorney, are you saying we need to take it, have a motion right now to actually consider it for a decision?
Well, if you want, yes, if you decide that you want to take action on it for decision purpose and not just for discussion purpose, you should take an action saying that you want to add this to the agenda for a decision tonight.
Okay.
Agenda for, to make this a decision item.
And vote on that, and then vote on a motion. So two different, two different things. Okay, great.
I'll make a motion to consider this for action tonight.
Thank you. Is there a second? Member Anderson? All right. Member Russell?
I do not have the materials that we're voting on.
Did it get sent by email to Member Russell?
It did, Mayor.
Okay.
When did you send the email, Manager Louis?
It was actually the city clerk's office, and they did send it at about the same time that I texted you offering to bring it to your house as needed.
I, I saw, I did not see, I saw the offer to bring it. I didn't see the email regarding it. Had I gotten an email about it and not posted on the agenda, that is one thing.
Well, I apologize.
Member Russell, you're saying that you didn't get the email, and you, did you read your emails at all this weekend and you never saw one?
Yes, I did not see that. I saw the email that the agenda was posted differently.
I'm sorry, Member Russell is correct. The, when I say we, the city clerk's office sent out an email, it was an email with the link that contained the document that had been added.
Okay, and you also texted her to tell her that something had been added?
He texted me to offer to have staff bring out a new copy. I don't want staff to waste their time coming out when the policy says we won't add things to the agenda.
All right, thank you. Member Questa, you had your hand up? Did you want to?
Are we into discussion on this matter then? Now that two of you have motioned?
Yep, we are.
Yes, okay, thank you. I am not going to be supporting this this evening. I, I don't want another development in District 4, you know, I looked through the plans that were presented to the housing authority. I know this is used by rights, so it's going to move forward, you know, we don't weigh in, but I won't be supporting it. I would actually prefer to see the letter amended. It currently says the city of Inglewood supports. I think that that's absolute, that every single person in Inglewood supports this, which is not true. I'd actually like to see the letter say the city council supports six to one, if that's what it ends up being here, this moving forward. But I'm not particularly fond of the language, and I won't be supporting tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none, we're voting on the original, or we're voting on the, Member Anderson has his hand up.
Yeah, we're voting to, sorry, I think you were going there, but we're voting.
Voting to actually.
Add it to the agenda. We're not, we'll have to have a separate motion to, okay, good, okay.
Did you want to say anything more about it?
No, thanks.
Okay, your hand is up, so I was just, I'll take it down. All right. All right, please vote by roll call.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Pro Tem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Five ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Questa and Councilmember Russell.
Thank you. We'll go back to the actual letter before us. I need a motion to approve the Affordable Housing Letter of Support from the city. We have a motion to approve the letter.
I move to approve the Affordable Housing Letter of Support.
And I'll second.
You froze there, but I think we know, and could I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion. Member Russell?
Thank you. If the president revokes this, because that is on his agenda to revoke the AFFH agenda, how is that going to impact our resolution?
The resolution, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So the resol, if the resolution is based on an existing law, if the existing law goes away, the resolution would go away with it.
Thank you.
Member Stone?
Thank you. I am definitely going to be voting to support this tonight. I think everybody knows that affordable housing is an issue that I care about deeply, and I like the numbers that I saw stipulated in the body of this text. It looks like a very forward-thinking and community-based approach to ensuring that folks can afford to live in our city. So I will be voting to support.
Thank you, Member, or Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, I too will be supporting this letter, you know, any affordable housing within the Demermette area, I'm all for, including here in the city of Inglewood, so I definitely will be in support of this.
Member Questa?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I would like to address that again, the wording of the letter. I really would like it to say city council supports this by the vote margin. I think that that's more accurate than to say the city of Inglewood supports. One final note, too, for me, it has nothing to do with the price of rent. If it was an upscale development, I'd oppose it just as much as one that's affordable housing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Member Russell?
I also will not be supporting it. Since I've been on council, I have not supported any of these because of the stipulations that are put on it. The other thing, that piece of property, they have been looking to do something with it for the five years that I've been on council, and they keep changing, and it's just a little triangle piece of property, and I do oppose trying to shove people in wherever, and so I will not be supporting this.
Any further comments? I will be supporting it because it is affordable housing, and we can't speak out of one side of our mouths saying that we're creating way too unaffordable housing in Inglewood by development and then not support actually developing affordable housing, which is almost always going to come in multifamily settings because of the cost. You can't just create affordable little homes for people who are living on what's unlivable wages to actually afford that. So I am very thankful that this is coming forward. This letter does, all does is support, doesn't mean it's going to happen, doesn't mean they'll get what they need. See no other hands? Please vote by roll call.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Questa and Councilmember Russell.
Thank you. I just have a couple more things. I would think I'll leave a few things for next time. I just wanted to say that I was really, really pleased with the folks that came forward tonight, as long as it was. At some point, I'd like us to talk about whether we help people not repeat the same things, but there were a lot of new ideas that came or affirming ideas. I realized tonight it was fairly lopsided on unleashed dog people that came forward, so maybe that's why it felt different, it wasn't like back and forth, but I thought the people were very conscientious and careful and respectful, and the evening felt really pretty positive until just the last 10 minutes, but I appreciated the way people handled themselves. I'm also really hoping that you have been putting out your feelers and information to the community about Wednesday night, which is our policing, 21st century policing. There will be a robocall thing that goes out soon about that, but I hope that we have more than we had tonight even, but we'll see. So encourage people that you know, if you have email lists and social media that you use, let's use it and see what we can get. All right, so next, council members' choice, so let's start with Member Anderson. So let's start with Member Anderson.
No report this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Member Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lewis, I appreciate, I got an update from staff, I don't know, within the past couple of weeks where we had sent the notices out to STR violators, the initial one saying you've got 30 days to apply. It sounded like we were coming up on 30 days and violations were going to be issued. Has that taken place?
Thank you, Councilmember Questa. Yes, I believe we are coming up on that. And I did, thank you for giving me this question in advance. I have not heard back from community development yet on that, but I hope to have an answer in the morning and we'll, we'll make sure that we're following that deadline schedule though.
Okay. And secondly, this to me is where the whack-a-mole comes in with, with STRs. There's always one coming up, there's always one being pulled off the market, it's, it's very fluid. Are we still getting that third-party report that's showing where they are in Inglewood?
Yes, we are a subscriber to the Lodging Rev service and as part of that service, we do get that report. If that's something that you would like to see as kind of one of your monthly reports, similar to your fire marshal's report, your code enforcement report, we can include that in your Friday update if you'd like.
I certainly would. Is it monthly that we receive that from that third party?
I believe so, but I can check on that.
Okay. I would, and you know, I, this, I'm, I'm not going to dwell on the subject too much now and I'll kind of follow up with you and, and staff offline. To me, there, this, the tracking gets, gets a little bit more challenging here of month to month, who, who showed up earlier, who's new and, you know, staying up on those violations. I think this is where enforcement gets challenging. Council took the challenge on and we said that we were going to do this, but I would like to continue to that, have that conversation. And thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Member Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I just want to reiterate my council request on the, I believe it was 11A1 and is, how, how would it impact us if a third party did change anything that we've done in paragraph seven of the contract?
Got it.
Thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Is it my turn, Mayor? Sorry, you're on mute.
I'm on mute. I said Mayor Protem Sierra.
Well, yeah, no report tonight. Thanks.
All right. And then Member Stone?
No report. Thank you.
Member Wink?
No report.
All right. City Manager?
Well, Mayor, I would love to say no report for you, but if I can share my screen, I just wanted to go through the questions that I mentioned that I would get to you all. Can you see my screen?
Yes, I can.
So as was noted during our discussion on this last week, you all recommended alternating or just a combination of qualitative and quantitative questions. So we are throwing these out. I did not get specific questions from council to include here. So these are ones that the police folks have said would be helpful to them, but certainly we're open to your suggestions. In terms of qualitative, you did see these, this set last time, what are your concerns related to policing policies in Inglewood? And so just making that an open-ended question. The quantitative would be what do you think the biggest challenges facing Inglewood from a health and safety standpoint are? And then you would select from these choices. We can certainly modify those choices. Moving down to the second section that's going to be covered during the Telephone Town Hall, which is hiring, training, discipline, and culture. Question number three qualitative is what are your concerns related to hiring, training, discipline, and culture? And, and so that would be open-ended. And then we would have, select one of these five. We put other there because if you have suggestions, other is not going to be an option. But what do you see as the number one training priority to be focused on at the city of Inglewood Police Department? And we have those four choices there, we can add more as well. And then the third and final sec, section of the Telephone Town Hall would be qualitative, in your opinion, are the programs that we've just covered? So that would be restorative justice that we're launching, it would be the Impact Team, our co-responder program and some of those practices are, in your opinion, are those worthwhile? And then the quantitative would be what is the highest priority issue regarding alternate policing initiatives in Inglewood? Co-responder, Impact Team, zone policing, restorative justice, body worn cameras, transparency. And again, we can make changes to those. So I just wanted to run by those because we want to make sure that this, this is really your Telephone Town Hall and we want to be asking the questions that you want asked of our community. So I'm glad to take feedback on this.
I have a question about, so when you're asking these questions, they will have received some information before that, so they'll know what we're talking about. So, so for instance, the community policing, people have really varied views of what community policing is.
Right.
They will have gotten a definition of that from our folks in some way and some examples, right?
They will. During, each of these sections is preceded by a five-minute presentation from police command staff about what we currently do and some things that we're considering doing.
Great. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I just have a question on how hard, how is the community answering the open-ended questions?
Well, the way the Telephone Town Hall works is we actually have the, you know, we're going to be talking to hopefully thousands of people on the call and we'll simply open up the telephone, ask the question, then open up the telephone lines and people then get to a screener that Broad, BroadNet, our company that we're contracting with, they have screeners and someone will say, I want to respond to this question. And so they will put them through to the call, to the moderator who will then call on them to answer.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis.
Member Wink, I saw your hand up earlier. Did you want to ask something?
No, it doesn't, no.
Any other comments?
I will mention that some of you, such as council member Wink, are statistics folks and we would really, really like to have this input on, you know, what the quantitative ones are in, in particular, because these again are, should be your questions. I, I just didn't get any responses from council to the question of what questions do you want us to ask? So we're, we're very, want to have the input.
All right. Now you've got Member Wink's hand up.
Yeah, I, I was going to complain, but you can't complain when you didn't offer. So that's why I didn't ask. Sean, I'll, I'll talk with you tomorrow morning and, and go over this with you.
Perfect. I, I think when you talk about quantitative, you're talking about a survey of number of people that agree with one thing versus another. That's, that's what you mean by quantitative, right?
Like, to me, this isn't quantitative, those aren't quantitative questions because you still have categorical variables that aren't really giving you any quantifiable. I mean, yeah, you numbered them, but they all look qualitative in my view, so, yeah.
It's a quantitative measurement of a qualitative opinion, of an opinion, right? That's what it is. It's a, it's a survey. It'll have numbers, Cheryl, it will. All right. Member Wink, are you done? Yeah, okay. Member Anderson?
I just wanted to, thanks, City Manager Lewis and the police who put this together. I do think that with all the feedback we've had on policing, you've kind of captured a lot of our thoughts and a lot of the priorities in the questions. So even though I didn't provide any feedback, this does look like the kind of questions this council would be asking. I think you guys have been taking in the information and, and putting it into questions really well, in spite of the questions about the qualitative, quantitative nature of it. But thank you.
Well, I see Wednesday night as the next step in our being really careful and supporting our police in every way that we can and making sure that we respond to the public at this time when we need to be really thinking in very, you know, with a critical eye, but not in criticizing the people, but thinking about our structure and what we're doing and how does it uphold the best values of our community. So thanks for helping put this together and for the staff. I know there's been a lot of time that they've had to put in to figure out how to do this. So anything else, Manager Lewis?
That's it.
All right. City Attorney? City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
I'm sorry, I could not find my unmute button. I have no report this evening.
All right. Let's take roll call to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
A second.
Thanks. Please take calls.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?